The evening, I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Pro Klein Select Board, and this is a regular meeting of the Select Board for February 23, 2021. At this point, I'd like to move that we go into executive session for the purpose of a personnel matter and discussion of strategy in relation to contract negotiations with a non-union employee. And this is a properly held reason for executive session. We will return to an open session after our executive session meeting. All in favor? Ms. Heller?
Aye.
Ms. Hamilton?
Aye.
Mr. Fernandez?
Aye.
Mr. Ranscuaia?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye.
Good evening. I'm Bernard Green, Chair of the Brookline Select Board. And this is the regular meeting of the Select Board for February 23rd, 2021. This is, this meeting's been held remotely using the Zoom platform as all meetings during this COVID pandemic. And you should know that the meeting is being recorded and that the recording will be a public record. If you don't want, if you're making a public comment and you don't want your image to become a public record, you can turn off your video and they'll still hear you. So with that, let's start off with some updates and comments, or I'm sorry, updates and announcements, or comments if you want. I'd like to mention a couple. First of all, the Police Reform Committee is holding a public hearing tomorrow on its report, which is available on our website and elsewhere. And we'll be taking public comments beginning at 5:30 and going until we're finished. Second announcement I'd like to make, and this is just something that I think is interesting and people should know about. There's an article on the website of the Brookline Historical Commission from 1899 that is, in my opinion, a very interesting report on the history of the antislavery movement in Brookline at the beginning of the 19th century. It's an interesting article in many ways. For example, we hear a lot about people in Brookline who were owners of enslaved people. So it's interesting that we, you know, the article talks about the antislavery movement that was fairly significant here in Brookline as part of the broader movement in the Boston area. The article talks about the use of the Underground Railroad to help get people out of the United States into Canada. Talks about the efforts by many of the members of the antislavery movement to release from capture. People who were, for example, on a boat in the harbor being shipped back to the South. And, you know, also talks about the ways in which people were, were helped through given place to stay and, and, and other resources. It's also interesting in terms of sort of illustrating the contradictions and ambiguities in many people's lives during that time as today. For example, many of the antislavery leaders of Brookline themselves had, quote, servants. Now, the article doesn't indicate whether those were enslaved servants, indentured servants, or free labor servants. But the fact that, you know, there is that, you know, that, that, the fact that the antislavery people did have servants that could have been enslaved people themselves is very interesting and something for further research and study. Anyway, I thought that that it was a fascinating article and, and you should go to the Brookline Historical Commission's site to, to look at it. When you have time to do, do some reading like that. So any other updates or comments from, or updates or announcements from the Select Board, Ms. Heller?
So I wanted to tell you about some interesting ideas for climate change that could very well affect Brookline. The, first of all, the Gas Leaks Allies, which is this regional group of municipalities and nonprofits. Mel has been attending some of the meetings. I've go, I go to the meetings. And somebody from others out front goes to the meetings. And in the past, two meetings have been quite interesting. We've heard from Audrey Shulman of HEAT, which is a nonprofit that focuses on gas leaks. And we've also heard from National Grid about the same issue, which is a, what they're calling a GeoMicro District, which is actually a Geo, more descriptive would be a GeoThermal Micro District. And that is where the, the utility, in our case, National Grid, but in other parts of the state, EverSource provides the gas. So they would build, in this, they're doing pilots right now. They would build a GeoThermal District that would provide heat and cooling for the surrounding neighborhood. And so they're, they want to make sure that the, the area that they select has, is got mixed use, low income, at least 100 residences. And so Audrey came to the Climate Action Committee meeting last night. I think people were really interested in it and described the, the National Grid pilot. It's just been filed with the DPU. So probably the earliest that anybody could apply would be December, September, when it's approved by DPU, but it's worth keeping our eye on. I had, we had somebody from Chesapeake Realty was in the audience last night. He was asking some good questions about it. I think that it's a very promising way to go for the future. Meeting, but is that National Grid has said they finally made an interactive gas leaks map. We had been, New York has had one of these and we said, well, if New York can have it, why can't we have? And so it finally, they say they, they got, they have it, but it's not quite on the website yet. I was looking for it back today and I didn't find it. So, but it should be coming along any day and I think that people, the staff in the town will be especially interested in it. And I mean to have a conversation with Aaron about it because it will provide information for ransom location or whatever about what's happening in the town in terms of instant, you know, we don't have to go and search for the information and look at old map, old leak maps, et cetera. So this will be supposedly really, really up to date and, and very, and interactive. So we're looking forward to, to having that. So as I say, it's coming along the pike and I think just keep in mind Geo, it's, HEAT is calling it. They kind of invented it. It's called GeoMicro District. And EverSource, by the way, has its, has already as a pilot and they're doing one, they're selecting the communities now. But they're looking at communities on the North Shore.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Hamilton?
Um, so the Bridle Path, which we really haven't heard too much about in a while, but the tool design, I believe, is assisting the town in doing the feasibility study. They have invited a, a number of stakeholders to, I think, one of the first meetings that I'm aware of tomorrow evening. So I will try to attend that and report back. I'm very pleased to see this project move forward.
Great. Mr. Fernandez?
Sure, just two quick ones. First, that this Friday, we are finally going to do the Florida Ruffin Ridley renaming just outside of, of the building on the Stedman Street side. However, we're asking people to join virtually. So you can actually watch it on Brookline Interactive Group at BrooklineInteractive.org/live. And then the other one is that it is that time, Brook, not, and so you, you may know it as Brookline Woman of the Year this year. There's just, you know, just too many, too many people not to have more than one Woman of the Year. So nominees must be women, by whom we mean anyone who identifies as female, who made a significant positive impact on the community or at the state or national level in 2020. Nominees must currently live or work in Brookline. And there's a ton of information and the link to nominate someone on the website for the Brookline Commission for Women who are leading this effort.
Great, great. Thank you. Mr. Vance, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you very much. Far be it from me to divert people's attention from this board, especially since I'm sitting on it. But the fact matter is, there's never a dull moment in Brookline. And tonight, a couple of other meetings that are occurring simultaneous with this one, I think are worthy of note. One is that the Preservation Commission is taking up the idea of proposing a Green Hill Historic District in Brookline. And I won't go into the details of that, but it, it, it may very well determine the fate of the property that was the home and studio of one of America's most famous architects, Henry Hobson Richardson. So that's the Preservation Commission tonight. And then the School Committee tonight is taking up this, the question of bringing children back into full in-person classroom education. Not all at once, but in hopes of eventually achieving, you know, a complete return over time. Meanwhile, the state has stepped in with a very important decision today. And so a lot of the parties to this very crucial decision are going to be at tonight's School Committee meeting. And I wish them, all I can say is I wish them well. It's a difficult issue. A lot of people struggling with it. And I think in, you know, in the tradition of Brookline, we're going to figure out a way to take the concerns of everyone and find a way forward there. And last, lastly, because my colleague, thank you very much, reminded people of the Florida Ruffin Ridley naming ceremony coming up on Friday. I just want to pay tribute to a website which is unbelievable. It's so, it's so good. It's so rich. It's called Hidden Brookline. Barbara Brown is, is, is a key person behind it. She's not the only person behind it. It has amazing materials on Florida Ruffin Ridley, but it also has just a wealth of materials, not only on the history of slave ownership in, in Brookline, but also, this is sort of a newer feature of the site. A lot of research getting going on the Wampanoags that were forced off of their land by the early European settlers. So I commend it to everyone. The, the work that has gone into that website is, is, is just amazing and should be recognized and it's a great learning tool for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other updates or announcements? No? Okay, let's move on. Approval of minute, meeting minutes from February 16, 2021. Hey, I'd like to hold those. I want,
Bernard, we haven't done public comment.
Sorry. Okay, just trying to get through this meeting. Okay, public comment. That's your, that's your job.
Okay, so as a reminder, we're trying something different. I'll just quickly read my little spiel. "Thank you for joining us for public comment. We are all volunteer elected officials who serve out of a sense of duty to this community. And we do our best to represent as many different points of view that are in this community as possible. We have a few rules I'd like to share. Each person speaking is limited to three minutes. And I'll say you can make prior arrangements like one of the speakers here did tonight to get more time. Please refrain from personal attacks or from addressing personnel issues during this period. You are welcome in the board members an email expressing your thoughts in more detail. If a speaker has reached the three-minute limit or violates other expectations, I will ask the other board members if there are any objections before instructing Devin to mute the speaker." Let's begin.
First person signed up for public comment is Danelle O'Neill. Danelle, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute and your time will begin when you're ready.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Donnell O'Neill, Senior, Town Meeting Member from Precinct Four. I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to, to speak tonight. I'm going to turn off my video for Ben. So in light of this being the last Tuesday in Black History Month, and I thank the Select Board members for speaking about the, board members for speaking about the, no, the Hidden Brookline, they do a marvelous, a wonderful job. I So, you know, I get chills every time I pass the John Edward Devotion House on Harvard Street. So, you know, I can't, I can't let this opportunity go by without speaking about it. So, so John Edward Devotion once said, "As slaves, people of color, were only equal in spirit, but not by flesh." I would like to take one moment in reading the names that were provided by the Hidden Brookline of about 84 enslaved in Brookline. Aki, Adam, Ben Boston, Boston, Bung, Caesar, Charles, Cuff, 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 Ditto, Dina, 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 Exeter, Felix, Flora, Flora, George, Ray David, Haga, Hawkins, Jack, 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 Jackie, Jane, Jenny, Jenny, Jeremy, Jethro, John Indian, Kate, 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 Catherine Cuff, Kent, Lemon, Margaret, Maul, Pamela, Peta, Peta, Phyllis, Phyllis, Pompey, Primus, 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 Prince, Quaco, Ruby, Rose, Rose, Sambo, Seko, Titus, Toby, Tenochquim, Venus, Venus, Violet, Warwick, William. And courtesy of Hidden Brookline says, and 18, whose owners listed them in documents simply as Negro. I would like, just, you know, 10 seconds, just for us to physically bow our heads in a moment of silence of them, of those names that were mentioned, please. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. So I wanted to comment tonight, just briefly, on a couple of things. One, about the amendment statement letter that, that I wrote, and that to the, to the board, and also that Susan Oxro, in regard in amending the, I won't get into personnel, but amending the statement that was presented to you guys earlier from a police officer. So that's, that's, that's one thing. I want to know, you know, if you have read it, what you've decided, if you guys need more time to think about it, you know, what's going on? Secondly, I want to know how, is, for Mel, how I can help?
You have 30 seconds. Donnell, are you still with us?
Resolution, write a warrant article. Also, have, have, have you spoken to Tommy Vitolo about, about the plans for this? I know there's, there's a couple of ways I'm looking at, I was looking at it. And I, and I don't know if you, if you were, as from the arrests, and apologize for my, my six-year-old background. I, no, for the arrests that would coincide with us being disproportionately impacted community and warrant drugs, and the aspect of us having an impact, the uniqueness of us having that impact fee money, because we've had it for so long. So I just, and, oh, and one last thing before I forget. I was, I was curious on the nonprofit organizations that you would like to partner up with in investing and handling, thank you, Devin. Mel, you can, I mean, you can get back to me however you have to get back to me. Thank you.
I thank you very much for concluding. I will say that I, I read the, the attachment that you had sent to Devin, and she did forward it to us. We will try to get back to you with information regarding the, the questions that you posed here tonight. Devin, who is next?
The next person signed up for public comment is Adia Junasi. You've been promoted to a panelist, and your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a Brookline Village resident. First, I would like to thank you all for letting me speak today. And also, I would like to say I appreciate you all for the good work lately. Things are beginning to pick up in regards to how things are getting done. I just have two points to discuss today, as well as two, two questions on both points. Number one is I read the physical year 2022 document, the section one, and specifically on the policy issues and initiative section. Like to thank you, Mel, for making available the $500,000 for the Ratio Advancement Fund, finally gained the ball rolling in the right direction. But I would just like to point out that I think it's best for now, like you said, to leave it up to the diversity and inclusion, the Community Relation Office, who's been, they've been involved in the process from the jump, to, to kind of decide what to do and how to disperse the funds. And my question on this would be, just to follow the nails, to shed, shed more light what you mean on exploring the opportunities with Brookline nonprofit communities to invest and manage the Ratio Equity Fund. Like, do you mean partnership with organizations like Step to Success, or giving the money to a nonprofit to invest in something for profit? So I just need clarification on that. Then, number two, I would like to thank the Chair, Bernard, for, for his and Judge's recent detailed report on Century Medical, in regards to the events that transpired on August 31st, 2020. For those who haven't read the report, it's available, I think, on the Brookline Town website. And from both reports, it's clear that a minor was in beating possession of the marijuana product, which was purchased from Century by a boyfriend, and they bought up on their product on the premises. Just one point, this was never reported by Century Medical to the police until both Donnell O'Neal and Susan Park, both Town Meeting Members, reported the issue two days later. And it kind of brings up another issue, which is similar to the, to a report from Lieutenant Campbell from the Brookline Police IA Department, which shows Century made a sale of products after 8:00 PM on August 10, 2020, another violation. And their license, because their license treaty town states that customers are not allowed to enter the premises within minutes before the close, which was 8:00 PM. And they failed to report it, another incident.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay, I'm not going to go back and forth. I would just like to know what the Select Board's recommendation on the issue in regards to Century Medical is, or if you guys are still thinking about it. And yourself, track real quick. I would like to thank Rowan Fernandez. I was in that meeting with the Imagine Tax Force. Perfect, great work. I love great team, good data analysis, good data collection. Keep up the good work. I appreciate you. And just the last point, when we talk about nomination for women, I hope we put even his name up there, because she kept a lot of things together in town this meeting. And I don't see no better candidate. So by default, I hope she's nominated for that, for that award. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. I, I hope I'm not speaking out of turn. I don't believe the Select Board has really met to discuss the findings regarding Sanctuary. So we don't really have that much to report right here and now. I do thank you for your comments. I think it's worthy of a, of an agenda item at a future, a future meeting to talk about, you know, the relationship regarding the equity fund.
The next person signed up for public comment is Megan Levine. Megan, your three minutes will begin when you're ready.
Can you guys hear me? The most frequently asked question. Thank you for having me. I'm Megan Levine, a Town Meeting Member from Precinct Three, but I'm actually speaking to you tonight in a bit of a different capacity, as one of the lead petitioners for Article 18, this past Town Meeting, which was a resolution for, to study ranked choice voting for municipal elections in Brookline. And we're very excited that so many Town Meeting Members, and actually many of you, were supportive of the article. It called for the Select Board to set up a study committee to study ranked choice voting. And the, the good news is that it's not just Town Meeting that's excited about this, but actually, many of the co-petitioners have also been contacted by residents that are excited about serving on this study committee. So my question for you tonight is, when will the charge be done, so that people can start applying for the ranked choice voting study committee for Brookline municipal election?
So I'll just quickly say, I think we're trying to identify who the lead on the Select Board will be for that. And, you know, it, with the police committees still going on, it, we're all kind of tapped out. So we have to figure out who we have somebody identified, it will start.
Okay. Thank you.
Next person signed up for public comment is Deborah Brown. Deborah, you've been promoted to a panelist. You can unmute, and your time will begin when you're ready.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Brown. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct One. I wanted to, you know, this, I'm actually tired of bringing it up. And it's an issue of budget equity. I'm, I'm still looking at our budget, and I, I still don't see a, a place in the budget that actually deals with issues that significantly impact low-income people. And I know that we use our community development block grant money, and I'm appreciative of that. But it's not enough. It's not enough. And more importantly, if we are thinking about our budget in a truly thoughtful way, we should be including the broadest range of issues, and not an incredibly narrow one, which is what I think we're doing now. So, you know, we passed the warrant Article 32, we passed warrant Article 33 to look at the Town School Partnership. We've talked about, you know, BFAC, and even BFAC, if you do it right, you could get to equity issues. And so I'm just concerned that we're, we're on this treadmill, and we don't know how to stop and catch a breath and say, how are we going to include this? Now, the answer might be, still be the same, that it falls as a low priority. But it should be part of the mix when we begin to analyze for, for what our priorities are as a town. I want to discuss our disadvantaged business utilization program. As I'm looking at the contractors for the school, and I know that the school is the other side and not the town, I'm looking at, you know, those, those are some fairly significant dollars there. And the question that, that hit me was, well, are there any people of color that are deriving any financial benefit from this? How many women? You know, if we've got, you know, millions of dollars going out the door, we should be able to figure out a way to make sure that underrepresented people have some minimal opportunity to gather some financial means from our contracts. So I, I am asking you all again, because, you know, I'm, I'm not above another warrant article. But it really felt like to me that this was something that the town wanted to address, and that they would address. And I understand that everybody's busy, but I, I think it's one of those important things, again, because of the impact, thank you, Devin, that, that we should begin to look at more thoughtfully. And, you know, I, Heather, I heard you when you said, you know, there's only five of us. I hear that, and I, and, and I'm incredibly sympathetic to that. And maybe part of the way that it works is that you just have it done in tears. And so that you don't have to, you, you should not have to make, you know, the souffle. You ought to be able to just walk in when it comes out of the oven and say, yep, that's a A, that's a B, that's a C, that's a D. So I'm asking you all to figure out a way to do that, because there's so much money that's just flying through the system, that is, is not necessarily reaching the people that, that need it most. So I, I thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we have no further signups for public comment.
Hey, thank you, Ms. Hamilton. Now, let's get to the minutes for the meeting of the Select Board of February 16th. Now, on those minutes, which include the presentation by Jake Akonklosar, Congressional Representative, I'd like to hold them and, you know, just check to make sure that there's some accuracy, that the minutes are accurate in some key ways. I want to make sure that we don't misstate or, or use the wrong terminology in some things he said. Is that's okay? Okay. Next, I'd like to take Item 6B through 6G. Now, in our packet, they're, they're labeled 6, or 5B through 5G, but I think the, the correct numbering is 6. Yes, Mr. Clagner?
Mr. Chair, could I just suggest that 6G of this group be taken out of order? I think Jonathan Simpson, our counsel, wants to clarify the issue. So, through, through F as a consent.
Okay. I was gonna, you know, give some more detailed description of that, but if he's willing to do it, great. Okay. So I, we've all had an opportunity to look at the, the items, and no one has indicated need to dwell into them in more depth. They include 6B, Amendment to the Contract with Gilbane for the Driscoll School, 6C, a change order with respect to Brookline High School in Skanska, 6D, Amendment to the Contract with Hill International for Brookline High School, 6E, Amendment for the Brookline High School Project, again, with William Ron Associates, and 6F, approving the contract with N.B. Kinney for the Brookline High School Expansion Project involving deferred maintenance items on the boiler mechanical equipment. And that's the amount of $3 million, $75,000. A lot of money, but a very, very important job. So, on favor, Ms. Heller? That's an I. Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Fernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Vanscoya?
Hi.
And Chair votes A. So, Mr. Clagner, let's, what do we, what do we have?
Sure. This, this relates to the Hancock Village project, which, when it was approved by our Zoning Board of Appeals, there was a, a condition that required Chestnut Hill Realty to limit the future development at the property. And that was going to take the form of a legal covenant. And I believe Mr. Simpson wants to clarify some issues. And I believe we're still looking for a vote of the Select Board tonight, John?
Yes, we are, Mel. The, the Select Board will be the vote, the body that executes the, the restrictive covenant that, that, that Mel just mentioned. It is, it applies to, more precisely, the grounds underneath the new residences of South Brookline Building, as well as the space that is known as the Green Belt, that spans the, the, the north side of the property. And it would, it would preclude any, any further paving or new buildings on that And it would, it would preclude any any further paving or new buildings on that property, and it was a condition of the comprehensive permit. And they've, they're working to get that executed by you guys and then ultimately recorded. The one thing I did want to flag Chairman Green, and this will require a slight modification to the to the language that you'd normally pull from the agenda to do the vote, is the vote the town's acceptance of the restrictive covenant is contingent on a vote at town meeting authorizing you to do so. We've already put the wheels in motion to get that on the warrant for the upcoming town meeting, but we will need to have town meeting ultimately ratify it. So if you could just include somewhere in the vote language contingent on a affirmative vote by the upcoming town meeting, just so we have that on the record as well.
Do we have language in the packet?
I was, I was thinking you could just sort of co-opt the language from the
That's fine. Okay, any questions about this? Seems like a good deal to me. Okay, so I move approval of the execution of the Declaration of Restricted Covenant binding binding between the town and the residents of South Brookline and R O S B Realty LLC, which is the brown lessor for certain property at Hancock Village and in favor of the town as contemplated by Condition seventeen of the comprehensive permit issued by issued to the owner and filed on February twenty, two thousand and fifteen as amended and delegating authority to execute the Declaration of Restricted Covenant to the Chair, all of which is contingent on a town meeting vote authorizing the select board to proceed. That adequate, Mr. Simpson?
That's fine, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
On favor, Ms. Ms. Heller?
Hi.
Ms. Hamilton?
Hi.
Mr. Fernandez?
Hi.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Hi.
And Chair votes A.
Thank you, everyone.
So do I sign this now or after our town meeting action?
It would be best if you signed it now. Residences of South Brookline, as well as both entities have already signed it. That way, we'll just hold it. And then as soon as it's town meeting approved, we'll just get it recorded.
It'll be held in escrow until that, yeah. Okay, and and the document says contingent on town meeting approval.
That will, it will be slightly modified from the copy that you had in your packets to contain a sentence that will reference. It'll basically have blanks for the town meeting, and then it'll be attached to it ultimately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have COVID nineteen update. What what's going on here?
I'll let Dr. Jett provide some statistics and thoughts, but, you know, the issue on everybody's mind is vaccines, of course, and the the extent to which the state allocation can be distributed downward away from the mass vaccination sites and to the local governments and the local entities who who are often part of vaccinations and systems. You know, I think the major problem, of course, is is the supply. And I think you've heard a lot of frustrations from local governments and local government leaders over the last week, but I didn't have a chance to attend the governor's or lieutenant governor's briefing today with municipal officials, but I I have a feeling that, you know, once more supply is going to come down the road in future phases, that we will become more of a part of the system of distribution of vaccine. I know Dr. Jett will probably mention that as well. But that's what sort of is on everyone's mind, but at the current time, we're dealing with the mass vaccination sites and now starting to open up into the major pharmacy retailers, although I looked today and there didn't seem to be a lot of appointments available, but I'll turn it over to Dr. Jett, he's the expert.
Good evening. So first, I guess I'll pick up there. Because I talked to Equity Board last night, also diversity inclusion. And there's not a lot of vaccines being distributed. I actually checked today and drove to different sites. Gillette had no appointments. Reggie Lewis Center had no no available appointment. So that lets you know, and if you make appointments online, there's a lot of frustration. I went to several sites. I heard complaints outside of Brookline. So, you know, I I think these mega centers is is where it's going to be right now. There will be appointments to open up probably all grizzles of CBS. When that's going to happen, I don't know. I do know from a positive note that we're working with Brooklyn, Brooklyn Housing. And it looks like we might get dosage early next week. And if so, we'll start vaccinating the senior housing next Thursday. So that's the plan. It looks like it did get approved. I just hope we receive the dosage. On a note, I know it's published in a paper about doses being wasted, and that has caused a lot of concern. I did talk reporters about that because it was reported that we had fourteen doses wasted. In actuality, we report this in M I S, which is the hub for reporting all vaccination that you do. And we actually did receive ten doses. And we checked the box when we came in, it didn't have it. And sometimes, you know, our dosage comes in vials of ten. Sometimes when we start the inoculation process, we might only receive nine doses out of ten. And so three times that happened to us. So thirteen out of the fourteen doses was not actually wasted. They they unaccounted for. We have no idea as to what occurred or why there's a shortage. And this is not something that's just happening in Brookline. It's happening happening across the nation where a person starts to inoculate and it's not enough dosage. Also, you know, keep in mind, when we start vaccinating people, you have to, the logistics is essential. If you have ten doses, you have to have ten people. If one person doesn't show, you got to find somebody to inoculate within six hours. Otherwise, that dose is wasted. There's no re-refrigeration, et cetera. So that's why our logistical efforts around vaccine and controlling it is paramount, and it's essential that we stay succinct and on track. Now, I move in terms of our COVID numbers. You know, and I've shared this with Devin, so it'd be up on the site. Positive cases is eighteen sixty-eight. We did have one additional death, not from their home, but broader community. And our cases per week has dropped from thirty-nine to twenty. So that's, that's in a pop trend in a positive direction along the same line. Testing is down. So our empathy site, not a lot of people testing. I had a conversation with Beth Israel. They don't have a lot of testing now, and they are looking forward to in the future to start doing vaccinations as well. They were shut down. Their site is very comprehensive. So, you know, you can go and make an appointment. There's a physician actually walking through the process, making an appointment. And then they send you an invite as to when to show up at the clinic. So I talked to the person today, they're looking to be open in the next couple of weeks, once once the governor's office starts releasing more dosage. So that'd be another site in Brookline that actually is going to be giving vaccinations. And so that's, that's a positive note. And that's all I have in terms of the update on COVID.
The eighteen hundred numbers, that this year or over the preceding year?
It's over the course of the pandemic since last March.
But we've had eighteen hundred cases. Pardon?
No, that's, that's the correct number.
Okay. Okay, any other questions, Hamilton?
I understand that there was a joint meeting between Advisory Council on Public Health and Panel Four, I believe, last night. And the topic of clusters and childcare centers came up. Can you just, you know, I know I'm getting information secondhand. Do we have outbreaks here in Brookline when it comes to our childcare centers?
So first, we invited Panel Four just to give an update in terms of what was happening in schools. So they were part of the agenda. We also had an update from Emergency Management, and they provided what was going on. So we have had various outbreaks in childcare facilities throughout the pandemic. So I do, and I don't want to, usually I talk very vague in in terms of confidentiality and HIPAA. But yes, we have various outbreaks going on in several daycare facilities. So I I have spreadsheets and details. I know people want that very granular data. But that would be the same as me releasing data for how many cases in Brookline housing in the exact place or the exact building. Those things I try to stay away from, and that's due to HIPAA.
Do those, are those cases serious cases or do the children recover fairly quickly? And and are they, do they involve the adult caretakers?
So they are kids. No one seems to be in serious harm right now. They isolated. But that we do have some daycare workers that also are isolated, along with people that are quarantined. So since, I think, like I said last night, since about November, about three hundred and fifty people have been quarantined. So it's only about fifty-two cases of COVID though, since that timeframe in daycares.
Okay, Mr. Van Scoia? I'm sorry, did you have your hand up before for him, Ms. Heller?
It's okay.
Okay, so one of you decide to talk.
Vanessa, go ahead.
Oh, you want me to go? Okay.
Yeah, yeah, sure.
So I wanted to ask a different question. I wanted to focus on homebound seniors. There's a lot of concern in Brookline among the senior community about people who are homebound. They just can't get out to Fenway or Reggie Lewis or to Gillette, certainly. And so how can we get vaccines and have and have an effective way to to get back, get these homebound seniors vaccinated? What can we do?
So one of the things, well, one good thing would be to have a vaccine. That that would be the first step. The second step is, you know, we've had preliminary conversations with Fallon. Because one of the, one of the issues would be the logistics of making sure that if somebody, if we actually do reach out to somebody homebound, having identified, that somebody has to be on site for fifteen minutes to make sure that there's no reaction. And so Fallon, right now, that was one of the rationales behind actually vaccinating forty of Fallon's Fallon staff. So that we could do clinics such as this or go to homes. Also, my nurse has done this in the past, homebound. So people have reached out to her personally, and so we're keeping the list right now. And so I know the state is working on something to deal with homebound. So we're trying to wait on that and see what happens, but I think we can make a lot more decisions when we had a vaccine. And it's very easy to execute. So we have already thought about it, and we have a list, and so we we just wait for the vaccine.
You have a plan in place, you just need the materials. Vaccine.
We have had discussion, emergency management, and and right now, there's there's not much we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Van Scoia?
Yes, and Dr. Jett, thank you again for all the work you're doing on this in this crisis. The the meeting that was referenced that took place yesterday covered a lot of important topics. And and one of them was the whole question of the mental health impacts of this isolation that occurs during COVID, the response to COVID nineteen. Mental health impacts on families, mental health impacts on adults, mental health impacts, especially on on children. Children who not only are isolated at home, but have not had the benefit of the contact with friends and with teachers in many cases that they, is so necessary to their peace of mind and their 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 development. Can you say a few words to people about two things? I heard reference to the possibility that you're working on setting up some future discussions of this to be shared with the public. So can you fill us in as to whether that's going to happen? And and second of all, can you give us your sense of how you weigh the question of damage to people's mental health and also the 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 real threat of suicidality? That if mental health deterioration goes too far, you know, we can get into you you can get into cases where it results in suicide. And so we're talking about, you know, COVID deaths, but we could also be talking at some point about the threat of death from suicide. How do you weigh putting those two things together in terms of policy?
So, you know, it's always, and I mentioned this last night. You you know, I can't go off of observation anecdotal data. You know, I can have a summation to say, you know, I think COVID cases is five thousand in Brookline. So therefore, I want to create a policy that we have locked out. So, you know, I know we have mental health issues. To what extent, I really need an assessment done. So if we're talking about school system and kids, you know, it's something that I've asked the school system to actually evaluate and doing an assessment on. To me, that's the first nature, the first step that should happen. The Health Department, we have two mental health counselors that actually social works to do mental health counseling in collaboration with the school. They're embedded in the school system and a high school. But that's only in a high school. It really needs to be more effort on the school system to evaluate the the overall system. And that's something that the Health Department, we can't do. So I I can't really weigh on to the mental health because I don't have that data. I know that there's issues from isolation, quarantine. But I don't have that data to what extent if somebody's did research. And so I can't really comment on something that is not researched or I've been presented with, especially in Brookline. Now, and and a lot of times people want to evaluate stuff that's happened in other communities, but applied in Brookline. What I'm looking for is the school system to do an assessment because they have the list served. They can reach out to the parents. They can, you know, go out and do a survey and really get an indication of what's happening. And I think that's what a work should occur.
And what about the question about upcoming meetings with the public?
So the the upcoming meeting with the public actually is more of the ACPH having a discussion about the school plan. They can't really vote on the school plan. That's not part of the ACPH's role. So, you know, we have tried to put the the effort back into the school committee, back into Panel Four, advisor school committee. And then Dr. Marini making a decision, because a lot of people think ACPH, Dr. Jett is holding up the schools from reopening. Just like I have done with any business and staff. Somebody presents a plan, we actually inject COVID and how they can safely do it. Before I could weigh in on any school plan, you know, I've seen memos. But actually, what we look for is how do you make sure that you open each school, not the overall school system, but each school and do it safely? Just like we did with private schools. Every private school in Brookline, we looked at every plan in depth on how they were going to operate every day, and then we were able to provide that advice. I haven't seen that in-depthness from the school system, so I can't really comment on how they're going to proceed. But I want to put that work back to them to make that decision. ACPH would discuss that probably Thursday. We're looking at another date. But that is something that we won't make a decision on, if that makes sense.
Great. Mr. Fernandez, actually.
Thank you. Dr. Jett, I'm wondering about, you mentioned earlier about the, we seem to have some testing capacity. And, you know, I'm interested also to understand a little bit more about the finances of this, whether or not this this capacity, if we don't have a lot of folks going right now, whether or not this, at this point, with numbers being low and hopefully continuing into the future to be low, we have the ability to expand testing. I know we're doing some, I think, batch testing of of educators right now. Maybe you can tell me a little bit more about that and whether or not that would give folks a little bit more confidence in 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 going to schools. But also, we've heard from folks in our business community that would love to be able to have employees do do regular testing in our small business community, I mean, do regular testing to give folks more faith and confidence that, you know, they're going into safe businesses as well. You know, as as the warmer days start to come and and more people start to come out, I I just wonder if there's any way to leverage the capacity we have right now to 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 expand the testing, maybe in the education space or in the small business space.
Can I first, if I could, please, so I I think that we have to understand a select board member, Fernandez, that this capacity, we we allocated money to go through March first. And we're almost there. And, you know, we're seeing a really it's costing us more. it's costing us more because the way our contract is, is structured, um, the fewer people who, who get tested, the higher our costs are for empathy to run this site. So we're actually running out of money uh, as we, as we head towards March first. Um, the schools do have the pool testing, as you mentioned. Um, but you know, our feeling is, you know, this site was really available for people, including our businesses, so you know, if, if they're not getting tested, I'm not really sure, is that something they're really willing to do? I don't know.
So is it the expectation that um, a- and I know this was funded by CARES Act funding, which is limited. Uh, is the expectation then that we're gonna close down um, testing in the, in the coming week or weeks?
We're talking about it, yeah.
So we have already reduced down to two days. And you know, back to what I was gonna say, the testing is open to everybody now, so it's not limited. The testing site was used a lot during the holidays. After the holidays, the testing has been done, and part of it was because people had to get tested to travel. As far as the Poot, that's the, that's a whole different dynamic that the school system is doing. They're doing sort of a rapid test using Binex, which has to be followed with a PCR. So they're in search of now finding somebody to do the PCR testing, which I've given them several options. And another one is that is, that's needing somebody to do that type of testing, um, and they're available. So, you know, I think it's, you know, we might see, I, I don't know how quick spring break comes up, but our site would be closed, but I'm sure as spring break comes up, if people want to travel, they will look for more tests. My guess is, and, and it's just my supposition, um, we are losing people for lost to contact, which means, you know, they do get a test, they find a positive, or we quarantine them. And for one reason or another, they don't call us back. So out of eighteen hundred and sixty-three people, uh, we've lost probably about, right about one-sixty. So that's telling me when CDC changed their standards on quarantine, they were saying people, they didn't change it because the disease changed. They would change it because they felt people were not compliant. So when people ask me, well, why don't you change the fourteen days? What, did the disease pattern change? No. It's still two to fourteen days. But people's compliance and pilot for being quarantined has dissipated the longer we've been in COVID. And that's what we're up against. Nobody wants to be tested unless they have to. And so we have a lot of people in, in avoidance, to be frank.
Um, I, I would say, uh, bro, that we will, we will look at it. We are looking at it right now to see, you know, how much money we have, how long we can do it, should we modify it to, uh, you know, maybe fewer days a week or whatever, but um, I think the fact of the matter is that testing um, nowadays is pretty um, ubiquitous out there. It's, it, you know, it used to be that testing was very difficult, uh, the results were, were delayed. Um, I'm not finding that so much anymore, but uh, you know, we'll look at it carefully.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just think you can get a test best, so you get a vaccine.
Okay, so, right. Can I get one? No, Miss Howard. You're muted, Miss Howard.
I want to go back to this issue of data, and especially as it relates to mental health of children. Um, and obviously, if we had a tragic suicide in, in Brookline, we would most likely know about it. But we're not going to know about the kids who are, um, for privacy reasons. Uh, we're not going to know about the kids who have suicidal ideation or have made attempts. And I'm wondering whether um, we could somehow partner with Children's, which is probably the main hospital that kids from Brookline would go to, to find out whether or not, you know, what the incidence is, not, and nothing, no privacy issue, no nothing, you know. We don't want to know their address, we don't want to know what grade, we don't want to know anything, except whether there has been some kids who have been treated at um, Children's for um, an attempt or suicidal ideation or that kind of thing. I'm wondering whether we have any way of finding that out.
So Yeah, so from a data perspective, if you remember, we just released um, last fall, the Health Behaviors Survey. Um, so usually that's every two years, that's done in the school system, is using youth behavior risk data, which they launch a survey in the school system. Um, and it has, it, you know, binge drinking, marijuana usage, tobacco, uh, mental health is in there. It's time now to relaunch that survey. And so
Problem with, is that, is that a voluntary survey?
Volunteer, anonymous.
You know, people may even be uncomfortable with that. I'm not asking uh, to find out from uh, people who live here. I'm asking to find out from a, a hospital perspective, whether they're treating patients um, who have this issue. And not who they are, not where they live, not anything of that nature, nothing private, but just so that we understand the depth of the problem.
Yeah, I think that that's one part of it. Because it's, it's the medical model of who actually showed up, and we can look into that. But it, the problem might be greater than that. And so you want a holistic approach of people that's not going to
I agree, I agree with that, but I'm just, you, you know, I'm just concerned that we may, if we're relying on voluntary reporting, people may be very reluctant to report under those conditions, you know, if their child is in uh, in dire straits and, and, and very upset and uh, having really, really mental health difficulties, they may not want to report that. From a pride, you know.
Yeah, it's very possible. Usually the, the youth behavior risk survey, we've found in the past, and we even put this in report, kids are more honest than adults in putting down actually what they do. And that includes binge drinking, smoking marijuana, tobacco usage. Um, and it's given us pretty good indication of, you know, what actually goes on in the school system. But there's definitely other avenues that we can look at, actually get the data as well.
Okay. Any other questions? Oh, you're just mov- moving your hair. Uh, okay, uh, thank you, Dr. Jett.
No, no problem, thanks.
Hey. Why my agenda here? Next, uh, budget review. Oh, boy, we're into that season. And we're starting off, I guess, with the Finance Department, uh, next, Human Services, and finally, our own Office of the Select Board. Is that the order you want to go? Well, looks like it is. Good evening, Miss Francona. Franconi, I'm sorry.
Good evening. One and the same, really. Uh, Gina Franconi, Finance Director. Uh, I am joined tonight by Rashid Bellosine, the Acting Chief Assessor, Mike DePietro, the Comptroller, and David Genikakis, the Chief Procurement Officer. Um, I want to see, I have prepared a couple of slides for this evening. So here, the Finance Department's FY twenty-two budget is three point four million dollars, or approximately one percent of the town's total budget. Uh, the budget is increasing by nine thousand seven hundred sixty-five dollars, or point three percent from prior year. And this is the breakdown uh, by division. All budgets were level funded, uh, with the exceptions of salary step increases and software maintenance costs in the services line. Um, the salaries make up seventy-three percent of our total budget, uh, followed by services, which is twenty-five percent. And so um, there is a negative nineteen thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars on that services line. And that comes from, uh, there was a thirty thousand dollar contract at last November's uh, special town meeting for the disparity study. Um, and so that is why there's a negative, um, which is netted with an eleven thousand dollar increase in our software maintenance costs. Um, so within, um, besides salaries, the services, uh, that line includes things like software maintenance for our uh, accounting software, the software that um, the assessor uses, and also uh, the reconciliation and receivable software in uh, the Treasurer's Office. And so that's about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars just in software maintenance. Our postage and printing and general services is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, our bank and credit card charges are around two hundred thousand. Um, we have some consulting in there at around forty thousand, and then the copiers and other leased equipment is twenty thousand.
Oh, are you saying that the disparity study will be completed in fiscal year twenty-one? Which is why the nineteen thousand is, is not gonna be there?
It was funded in twenty-one. I don't see a payment. I know that DICR is working on that, but it was parked in uh, the purchasing budget. Um, so I um, I saw that they had some notes and they are starting to write their final report, but um, I, I would look to DICR uh, for more information on that. I wanted to show um, uh, by division, uh, the number of employees that are staffed. Uh, we have thirty-one point two-three people. Um, thirty-two wonderful individuals um, that make up the finance team there. Uh, but there are no changes uh, from FY twenty-one to twenty-two staff-wise. Some of the um, finance highlights, um, as you know, Brookline received an unqualified audit opinion on its FY twenty audit. Uh, we recently retained our triple-A bond rating from Moody's and S and P Global uh, for our upcoming FY twenty-one bond sale. Uh, assessed values uh, are the fourth largest in the state. Uh, the average selling price of a single-family home is one point ninety million dollars, and in a condo is eight hundred and eighty thousand. Our real estate tax collections are holding strong at ninety-eight percent. Um, and one of the things that's happened through the pandemic is that we've really tried to work on uh, efficiencies. Uh, and a great story uh, in finance is our payroll division. Um, they've had great success in onboarding new hires uh, using DocuSign. Um, and in Treasury, uh, we're also accepting uh, various uh, online payments, um, such as PayPal, Venmo, uh, Apple and Android Pay. So now you can, you know, you can pay by your phone, you can, uh, we've just tried to make it more accessible to everybody to make sure that they can pay on time. Um, and we're also coordinating with other departments and IT to allow for more online transactions. Our real estate software is ready if the Community Preservation Act passes, so we'll be ready to go and load that in the um, next year. Um, Purchasing has just done an incredible job of procuring town needs through the pandemic, um, and also on the large school projects. Um, and I was recently asked, and I'm now sitting on the Community Engagement Racial Equity Working Group. Uh, we've had a couple of meetings, and I look forward to um, coming up with some smart goals for our department. Um, Treasury, uh, we've been managing the Town Hall Concierge on the first floor. Uh, we were fortunate to um, be allowed, um, there was a, a library staff person, um, who uh, made the shift over to Town Hall. She's doing just a wonderful job uh, managing the comings and goings of all in Town Hall, and we appreciate that. Um, and um, lastly, I just, um, the staff that are with me this evening, but also all of our finance employees, I just, um, I'm so appreciative of them uh, that they've been able to keep their oars, oars in the water during this difficult time. Uh, and they continue to keep rowing and keeping the town afloat, so thank you. Oh, I have one last slide, just um, because it's always nice to get a plug, um, plug in at these meetings. Um, but for assessing in Treasury in particular, because we are forward-facing, um, I just wanted to show our email addresses and phone numbers um, for anyone to call. And in Treasury, we also have where you can pay by phone any of your bills, and you, um, this is the link for um, paying online or just viewing your bills, you can always do that as well, but just um, around um, due dates and things, I know that um, we, uh, the volume of calls and things uh, increased. And I just want to make sure that everybody knows that there's always a way to get ahold of us.
Great. So uh, questions? I have a couple. Uh, did I miss uh, something in the packet? Uh, I saw that in the um, uh, one of the slides you put up here, uh, there was a uh, achievements, um, I forgot exactly what it's called, achievements, you know, triple-A bond rating and, and, and other things. Um, but I didn't see in the packet, um, where you have objectives and accomplishments, which is sort of how the other departments, um, um, you know, put that uh, together. Do, do you, do you not have that?
Um, I, not in the packet, I don't have that. Um, I just wanted to um, put a couple of slides to um, to show what some of those areas were, but happy to provide.
Yeah, but what I think the board has been asking for is um, a, a list of things that you hope to accomplish in, in one year, and then uh, in the next year, how successful you've been in accomplishing them. You know, so we have a sense of uh, you know, that, that things are going forward and, and specifically in what ways, so. Yeah. I have another question. So I noticed, and I'm serious about this question. I see that you and other departments have a clothing allowance. Um, I'm curious as to what that is. I assume it's COVID-related, meaning uh, PPE? Or, or, or if not, what is it?
No, it's um, it's not. It's uh, one of those things that's uh, in the union contract. Um, it used to be um, a uniform or a boot allowance, and it's been carried forward, and now it's called a clothing allowance for people in the union.
Okay. Uh, I noticed that even the Select Board has a clothing allowance.
You probably have some staff members who are in the union.
Okay, okay. Um, my other question was, uh, no, actually, that was my only question. Thank you. Any other questions on the Select Board?
Well, at one point, Dave Genikakis had his hand up. I don't know if it's still relevant.
Oh, I'm sorry, is, um, Mr. Janikakis, are you still there? Okay.
Can you hear me? Yep. Uh, thank you, David Genikakis. Um, no, this is regarding uh, the disparity study, the, the money that was earmarked in the Fall Town Meeting. I just want everybody to understand the thirty thousand is seed money. It will not be enough to complete a full disparity study. Since November and December, January, I have been uh, meeting with companies that do disparity studies, as well as consultants that um, that do uh, evaluating the data from them. Uh, it is, you know, not to shock anybody, it's going to be an expensive and time-consuming undertaking for the town. Uh, I refer everybody to the city of Boston, just completing earlier this month, uh, their disparity study. Now, Boston spent a million dollars. Uh, I've been looking at with Somerville, a regional approach for Brookline, perhaps Newton, perhaps Cambridge and Somerville, uh, because we have the same pool of companies that we use. But I, I don't want anybody to get the impression that a full disparity study will be done next year. The estimate to complete per municipality is a quarter of a million dollars. So I just want everybody to be fully aware that disparity studies, so that we can comply with the equal protection clause of the Constitution and do it properly. Um, we're getting advice from our legal counsel here. Um, we're having participation from Dr. Goino, from the Planning Department, the Economic Development Department, and relevant departments. But this is going to be a process that, uh, the first step would be to develop an RFP, bring in a consultant, uh, or consultants to do that. That's what the thirty thousand dollars uh, is gonna, you know, get us moving on that. But it's a, it's a multi-year, fiscal year approach. So I just wanted everybody to be understanding that to get to the place that we want to be, um, you know, this is going to be something that uh, we have to do deliberately and properly, so that we don't leave ourselves open to any challenges in court or anything like that. But that, that was, you know, that's why I had raised my hand, just so that, you know, folks would be aware of that. But I appreciate that.
And I, I, I take it that means we are not doing a disparity study, which is a, a lower-level study?
We're, we're doing what, what the intent would be to do is to do an RFP, to obtain consultant or consultants to do a disparity study. Uh, but this, the first piece of it here is to really Uh, but this, the first piece of it here is to really properly frame what we need because it's both data-driven, it's market-driven. We have to identify the commodities and services so that things like the schools, things like the uh, the different projects where they're doing, that we're able to legally earmark.
Right. Okay, I'm, I actually, I misspoke. This is Jan Kockus. I, I meant not a disparity study, but a avail- availability study.
Right.
Which is, which we were talking about before, so we're not gonna do that, but do a disparity study.
Well, no, I think, I think there's other, the, the racial equity group is doing uh with Dr. Joe and O and the uh diversity office a separate process. That's separate. That's already been underway now since the middle of last year. This would be specifically on uh working with companies, you know, working with uh different disadvantaged categories of companies. So it's, there, there are multiple tracks. So it isn't, there's not one or the other. There are multiple tracks.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Fernandez.
Well, I was, I was actually gonna ask about saving money going forward, but um, let me ask it anyway. Uh, uh, you mentioned um Gina during your presentation about sort of us using DocuSign. Um, I'm wondering about in the future, and maybe this is also a larger question, um Mel, for like the larger budget going into the future, but um, are there opportunities that sort of the, the greater adoption of things like, um, you know, virtually signing contracts, but also potentially um virtual work, things like that, um, that might in the, in hopefully not in the not-too-distant future start to save us money um and with respect to the way we work. Do you see any of those it within your own department? I'll just ask you. Um, do you see any of those possibilities there?
I do. I think um one of the, the bigger targets could be printing and postage um for, and I think that could be a town-wide initiative uh as we um do the printing and postage for everything in the town. And um, I think if we could get a group together to um think about ways um where we wouldn't um, where we could go more electronic instead of um soap paper driven.
Mel?
Um, you're asking about um labor, uh, labor savings potentially. Yeah, it's, it's possible. You know, we've, we've found that uh everybody's very busy uh during the, the pandemic, but maybe once the, the systems get in place and they're more commonplace to, to use, we'll, we'll find that there are some savings and we're always looking for that. Uh, we didn't find any this, in this budget year at this early stage of this process, but it's possible in the future.
Yeah, I'm wondering too, just a thought. Um, but uh, you know, we're, we're used to sort of everyone uh who, who holds a professional position, having an office and going into the office and things like that. And and whether or not there are certain functions, obviously, um, you know, certain folks in D P W or elsewhere, but there might be certain functions where I think, you know, folks have proven that they can and will work from home and be effective if that's something that, that um would save us on things like space and all the associated costs. Yeah.
I, I think you're gonna find that's, that's sort of the thing uh that all businesses and organizations are, are looking at. And uh I think we're not unusual, you know, we're, uh, this building is very, very empty uh most days and uh you know, I think we're getting used to see, seeing how that can work and what are the kind of savings, but it's early in that process right now.
Yeah, I was gonna ask a similar question of Ms. Braga, cause she is a developed a work-from-home um programmer that actually deals with uh all the issues that come up when people are working from home, like uh stress, uh like supervision, et cetera. So um, let's make sure we ask her about that. In terms of, you know, wha- what are the uh things that make, that things that we've been forced to uh do during COVID that may be uh useful to continue after COVID. So. Any other questions? Uh, Ms. Heller. You're muted again.
Heaven keeps doing that to me.
It's that dog that keeps barking.
Yeah. Um, I was going to ask Gina, I'd not heard that we could do pay by phone. And um, I'm wondering whether that somehow hooks into the system. I use the system uh to pay my bills online, you know, you check on pay online and then I go into the iCloud system or something it's called, I think. Is that? Is that compatible with that? Is that how it works?
Yeah, it all works the same. So you can call and they'll, you can punch in your bill number and they'll tell you uh what your balance is. Uh, and then you can enter in your payment information and you can also save your payment information for future payments. Um, it'll say, do you want to use the account on file? Um, so some people uh prefer to pay that way.
Gina, can I just ask you a question? Does that, I'm sorry.
Can you schedule your payment?
Not on the phone.
Okay.
That's in real time, but on, online, of course, you can, you can schedule your payments.
I was going to ask Gina, is uh by this online, uh, does this allow you for the uh, the electronic fund transfer uh option that avoids a, a payment for a credit card payment or?
Oh, the convenience fee?
Yes.
Yeah, so the um convenience fee, if you do an electronic check is 40 cents. Um, and then the credit card convenience fee is still 2.95% of the transaction.
Thank you.
What about A C H transfer from your bank to the town? Is, is that their fee for that?
Are you starting, are you initiating the transaction from your bank or are you using the online payment system?
No, initiating from your bank. Like, like my bank has a bill pay thing.
Right, yep, then that's free.
Good. And they automatically make the payment, so I don't have to worry about missing a bill. Uh, this new world is great. Okay, any other questions? Um, let's go.
Uh, I, I have to say that I, I think you may have been too modest in uh pretty much just uh, uh, quick, quickly mentioning the uh bond rating uh agencies and their ratings that were just issued for Brookline. Um, one of them um just arrived today. That was Moody's. S and P arrived, uh, I guess it was about a week ago. Um, and of course, immediately, one of the real glories of Brookline is that people have questions about everything. And it precipitated questions along the lines of uh, is, is it measurable? Is it quantifiable as to what we actually save uh by virtue of having a triple A rating versus, say, the next lower rating? Especially in a time when um, rate, interest rates are at a historic low. Um, so they're pretty cheap, even if you don't have the best rating. Have you ever done a back-of-the-envelope kind of a calculation? Can you?
I have, and honestly, um, two weeks um before the sale, I pretty much check the rates every single day and I calculate what it will be for a triple A, double A, single A um to see what the different, what the differential could possibly be. So my fingers are crossed for the sale this week. Um, I um, I hesitate to say the number out loud. I don't want to jinx the sale uh with the, but the rates are they're the lowest I've ever seen. Um, but yeah, it's certainly um, uh, like I said, I, I do a back-of-the-envelope every day two weeks before the sale, so I'm happy to uh put some numbers together if you'd like to see.
Okay.
I'm just saying, in terms of our, in terms of our total outstanding debt, um, you know, I, 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 you know, have a way of saying to people, oh, I'm sure it saves us millions of dollars. Um, am I crazy to think we might be saving that much over the the lifetime of this debt?
I don't think you're crazy at all. I think that's absolutely true. I, you know, I am hopeful for a rate under 2% and um that it's almost free money, honestly.
Mm-hmm. Um, I hope so. I hope you get what you hope for. Um, I had a different question altogether. Um, especially where a department such as yours is concerned. Um, I always wonder uh i- is there an opportunity to actually add a position that more than pays for itself? And Mel is listening very carefully to your answer. Is there?
Uh, to add a position?
That would pay more than pay for itself. Um.
Well, I'm 1% of the budget, but I bring in 75% of the revenue. Does that count?
That's kind, that's why I'm asking you the question.
I, I think for the most part, we're, we're fully staffed. Um, at the moment.
I had to ask, I had to ask the question. Um, and I have one more. Sorry, this one might be from Mr. Giancaccus. Um, when, you know, when I hear that, uh, I heard Deborah Brown earlier tonight, and I think she asks a very good question. Uh, which is uh, let, let's never forget how much money uh goes out the door to contractors every year. Uh, consultants, contractors. On budget. Um, do we really have to wait until we get the results of the disparity study uh more than a year from now uh before we actually start tackling um the real work of improving the uh amount of uh minority and women-owned enterprises that get business from the town of Brookline?
The short answer is yes, under the equal protection clause. And you can check uh when legal uh comes in front of you. Patty Korea, Attorney Korea has uh extensively researched this. Uh, Boston has been sued for millions of dollars. Um, it's unfortunate that that's the case. However, for race-neutral measures, those aren't affected. But so we would be able to, you know, work on improving those types of things, but to specifically earmark um, there are parts of the state procurement law called sheltered uh programs. Again, no community in the state has been able to take advantage of those because if you don't complete a disparity study before that, you uh are opening yourselves up for legal challenges. So unfortunately, you know, not to belabor the point, but um race-neutral things can be done, but specifically targeting uh women, minority-type businesses, that's just not allowed under the constitution. And uh, uh, you know, legal may be able to opine a little more eloquently than I can uh because we've, we have been looking into it for quite a while. You know, based on the Warren article from last year, as well as the uh money that was earmarked uh in the fall town meeting. But um, once you go through that process, it would be something that would, we, we would be able to do uh and be able to do successfully without having a uh substantial legal challenge. But yeah, that's.
And we, we would be able to uh set goals, as I understand, but not quotas, for example. So it can't be rigid uh quotas. But e- even in the absence of a disparity study, there are things that we can do to incentivize and, and encourage uh minority firms to contract with us. Uh, and you know, what, what I think is equally important, although very seldom discussed, to uh encourage the majority firms to uh ensure that their, their own employment practices uh have been successful in uh, in attracting a minority in women, um, you know, workers as well as um, you know, managerial staff. Uh, and you know, there, there's some things that I've suggested to do with respect to that, that I think are, 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 you know, pretty good. Over, uh, not, not immediately, but long-term. And you know, the town is always uh adding its R F Ps uh the type of incentives that, that are possible now. Uh, it's not, you know, this stuff is not uh, you know, easy as, you know, let, let's just hire women and minorities uh for our projects. I mean, there's a lot more to it than that, but uh but Ms. Heller, did you have, have a question? I'm sorry. Ms. Fernandez, you have a follow-up?
Yeah, just on this. Um, this is the doors open there. Uh, the um, you know, one of the things you talk about sort of racial neutral policies that we've been hearing a lot about is, is breaking down larger contracts into smaller contracts so that, that smaller firms can compete for those smaller contracts. Is that, I know, I know there's a, there's a report coming out soon from the working group, but is that something we can expect to see as part of that and, and a, and part of our plan going forward? That um, that is separate and apart from uh, from the results of the disparity study sometime in the future?
I, I haven't seen any, any draft reports yet, but I believe that's one of the uh, uh, things that you can do. Um, and I do know that um, you know, with the large projects, school, D P W, the governor uh signed into law within the past two months, uh, a bunch of requirements for state-funded projects. So uh, obviously with the chapter 90 money that goes through D P W highway engineering uh and any school projects such as the M S B A, uh, there will be additional requirements on state money. So, so yeah, they, the, the smaller businesses are sort of the key for women-owned minority companies uh because that's where the, the most activity is. And you know, being the subcontractors for some of the larger, that's where, you know, there should be a, a, a good chance for them to participate in, in, in the big projects that are going on.
There, there are a number of uh non-structural or, you know, non, non uh race-based uh actions that I think we're looking at. Well, um, one of them is, uh, you know, the, the possibility of reducing the scale of the contract um to, to a level of playing field. And another one is to uh, you know, just to find out who's out there and start sending them our, our, our stuff, you know, making sure that they know we're going out to bid and not relying on them, you know, looking at the goods and services bulletin or something like that, although they should be doing that if they're looking for public contracts. We're obligated uh to a lot, a lot of our contracts to act, actually advertise, not just in the local newspaper, but in other state publications. But there are a number of things. I, I would also like to hop on to Dave's comment about um the state. Uh, we buy a lot of our goods and services from state contracts. Um, the state allows us to do that. I, I think it's in their interest too, because it expands the uh, the buying power uh of, of the state and gets lower pricing. But they're doing it as, as a benefit to the smaller cities and towns so that we don't have to go through a lot of the red tape and the bidding and all that. As long as you can uh select a vendor off a state contract, there is no further requirement to do any of our local bidding. So we believe that the state is a great um place to uh qualify and encourage these vendors to, to get involved in these state contracts. Uh, state contracts for a lot of things, right, Dave? I mean, we, we buy a lot of uh goods and supplies off the state contract and I think we want to keep the pressure on the state uh to help us out. Rather have one large entity do that than 351 cities and towns.
Correct, yeah. Cause Heller, you had a question?
I did. Uh, just to follow up on the issue. Pardon me?
I, I'm, I'm next.
Uh, just to follow up on the issue of our triple A bond rating and the low interest rates now, is there any way? Uh, and I thought we did this in the past once, to uh convert some of those um payments on bond debt to a lower interest rate. You know, could we take out, could we float another bond, pay off the other one and have a lower interest rate?
So that's refunding.
Like refinancing your mortgage.
Yes, so, yes, that's refunding and we can do that. And we are going to do that as um, in part of this um bond sale that's coming up this week. Um, the debt has to be 10 years old and so um, the 2011 issue for the Runcle School um, and some other projects that are um, we'll, we'll be able to um do like a refinance and save money on those old bonds. So that um looks worthwhile uh when I looked at it with the financial advisor. And so uh, we're moving forward with that.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Van Skoyak, I think you had your hand up. I didn't see it. But let me, before you ask your question, let me ask one. Um, I, you, you just told us that we're issuing some bond or selling some bonds next week. Okay, first, I'm hearing about this. Um, I, you know, I always uh made a point of asking you to um make sure that the board receive um, you know, advanced notice, but also the, at least the official statement, preliminary official statement.
Yes, I'm waiting.
So, so that, I mean, I know, not everyone's gonna read it, but uh we should at least have the opportunity.
Only bond junkies are gonna read it like you.
Well, yeah, but yeah, there's a lot of information that I think other people will read too. Um, or at least people ought to be aware of it and think about the type of questions they should be asking before they, you know, put their signature down on a document. So.
Yes, and I have um allowed for time um between um when the approval um is needed by the select board so that you'll have additional time to read through those documents.
Okay, but that's after the sale?
Correct.
Okay.
I have to have the sale before they create the document. I can send the official statement. I have the, the preliminary official statement, but all of the other. I can send the official statement, I have the, the preliminary official statement, but all of the other documentation comes after the sale.
Okay, so I used to be a bond lawyer, so maybe this is just interesting to me. But I think we at least needs to, need to know in advance of the sale, that a sale is coming up. And then we need to sort of gear up to think about, you know, what our responsibilities are and what our potential liabilities and of course, the worst-case, worst-case circumstances.
Sure, my apologies. I, I thought the reading notes would trigger that there was a sale coming.
Yeah, we got it today, but. And the reading knows this sounds that something's coming up soon, doesn't say that it's coming up next week, and that, and that was my point. Miss, Miss Hamilton, did you?
John had his hand up.
Oh, okay. John.
I've got that funny little hand up. This gets back to my question from Mr. Giancaccio. I, I just want people to sort of, I'm trying to capture what I was questioning there, having to do with, do we really have to wait till the end of the disparity study to actually take some actions? And, and here's what captures it for me. I think I heard it said that we are, you know, we're in the process of recruiting, hiring the consultant who's going to do the disparity study. And it, it would, to me, be the height of irony if the consultant that does the disparity study turns out to be, you know, a majority white consultant. If there were people who are in this field and who are from minority firms, women-owned firms, and available. You know, and I know it's, always comes down to who do you think is, is going to do the job the best? But I, I'm, I'm going to guess that there, there must be some pretty qualified firms in that field who do disparity studies. And am I hearing correctly that we we couldn't even sort of make a decision, a conscious decision that we're going to, you know, maximize our efforts to have a minority-owned firm or a woman-owned firm do the, do the disparity study?
Correct, we cannot do that legally.
Okay.
But I think in, in, in this field, there are significant minority firms as well as, you know, majority firms that have a respectable number of minority and women employees as well as managerial staff, level people, so.
The companies that I have spoken with, and I don't want to, I, I can tell you that everyone that I've spoken with is, you know, reflecting an extremely diverse background. And I think we should be satisfied that, at least from what I'm seeing, I can't guarantee the outcome of any RFP or bid situation, but they're very interested in what we're doing. One of the companies we spoke with is the company that did, that has done Boston's disparity study, others for other cities around the country. So, you know, we're, we're keeping that in mind. It's, it is definitely something that is, is coming loud and clear of the companies that we meet with. And they, they understand what, you know, what the, what Brookline and, and then the other communities around Boston would, would like to do within the, the guidelines of what's, what we can do legally.
Okay, any other questions? There's a lot of time on, on finance, and we still have human resources, which I think is going to take a lot of time also, so. Unless there's anything else that is on people's minds. Okay, let's move on.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have human resources. Ms. Braga sees here. In front of her green screen. Ms. Braga, we know that that's not really your library behind you.
Covers a lot of sins in my attic.
Right.
So Devon, do I have permission to share?
You do.
Thank you. I'm in the middle of presenting, I can't talk to you right now. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Ann Braga, I'm the HR Director. On the call with us should be Leslia Noble, my very trusted Assistant Director, and Melissa to cover the benefits components of our programs tonight. Okay, I'm in the middle of presenting, good night. Okay. So this is your HR team. We have Leslia Noble. We are finally staffed after three years. We have our leave and disability specialist, Ryan Casala, our benefits administrator, Kayla Tolino, HR Coordinator, Kimi Alden, and our HR Administrator, Faud Fuad Bumshahed, and our labor and employee relations person, Jennifer Stallion. So it's very welcoming to have a full staff. And we have been very busy through COVID. What we do, so a lot of what I'm going to talk about today is not going to be about how many claims we processed or those kind of things, but really talk about the heart of the town of Brookline. We deal with all of our employees, both town and school, from the time they, they apply through the, the time that they retire or leave our service. And so we're going to talk about that as the focus. And we're still managing issues such as recruiting and onboarding benefits, discipline, supervision and coaching, disability and leave management, and offboarding and retirement. And the focus tonight is really a conversation about moving HR from a transactional organization to a transformational organization. And what that means is looking at Brookline being a destination employer as a respectful workplace for all employees, as well as a place that provides training and development across technical, legal, and interpersonal areas to improve employees' knowledge and skills and to advance the provision of services to the residents, visitors, and businesses for the town of Brookline. Now fully staffed, we are looking at how we can support town departments and employees to achieve those goals. So the highlights for, for the last fiscal year include a strong change, obviously, as all the other departments have, to the response to COVID. And I'm pulling out some significant areas from the full Open Gov Report for the department and will highlight those and be able to answer any specific questions on other things to Bernard's earlier point about accomplishments and the the objectives for the new year. So Fiscal 21 changed for us our plans, as it did for other people, in, in focusing on HR response to COVID. And that included employee manager and departmental support for a transition to remote workforce, including developing the policies for face coverings and sanitation protocols. And four of our seven employees are currently certified by the CDC through remote training on contact tracing. So we have been responsible for the contact tracing for town employees and being able to do their travel approval, as well as when they can return to work and working with departments on how to reduce even further our exposure by employees. And our incidence of employee-to-employee exposure has been very small. The other thing that we are working on is the work-from-home policy as referenced earlier. And that is in development. It will be need to be negotiated with the collective bargaining units, as well as a review by the HR Board and going through those things. The town of Brookline did implement the federal Families First Coronavirus Relief Act leave policies for individual diagnosis, family diagnosis, and remote school or Zoom school, as I call it in my house, and the impacts for our employees. And we did not exclude police and fire from these provisions, whereas many other communities did. HR has been leading the strategic reopening program for the town of Brookline and their offices. While Brookline was never closed, and I want to make this point very clear, that the town of Brookline was never closed. We closed to public-facing services, and we made other arrangements and moved to remote work. And really worked with all departments to significantly change how we do business. How do we do onboarding and orientation on policies and human resources and enrollment for health benefits from a remote environment? And I'll talk a little bit further on that. We also assisted departments in working through furlough and, furlough and layoff assistance as a result of the changes in service modes to particularly recreation and libraries and how that would work. I've been participating on the Police Reform and Reimagining Committees and look forward to what that work looks like as we move forward. Sat on the management team for the one-year MOU, putting in place the first steps for body cameras, dash cameras, and GPS. I also sit with the CDICR complaint review process and am working with the Racial Equity Group on how we look at racial equity through a different lens throughout the organization and throughout the town. This past year and the current year, we have completed an online annual benefits enrollment, which was announced about a month before annual enrollment started earlier in 2020. And we partnered with CVS to conduct a regular, regular flu clinic, not a COVID flu clinic, for, for regular flu vaccines in Town Hall, where traditionally we have spent about $5,500 on, on flu clinics. And we were able to partner to do that for free this year. The HR budget, as Gina talked about, is level funded for Fiscal 22. And that means that we are looking at an increase of $1,953 to a total of $604,000. Again, we are fully staffed in the current year for the first time in three years. We hired one person a month before we closed down to go to COVID, and we hired one during, during COVID in April of 2020. And we did not meet him until about six weeks into the, into the start of work. So we successfully brought him in as a, as the Leave and Disability Specialist with a completely remote process. So our HR objectives focus on COVID continuing and the continued support of managers, employees, and, and full departments. We're starting the work of transitioning back to the workplace. So it's not back to work, it's back to the workplace. And related to that is, is really doing significant work on what a work-from-home policy will look like for town employees. And we know, as, as was discussed earlier, that there are some jobs that will never be work from home. A police officer, a firefighter, a public works laborer will never be work from home. But how does that look in the labor relations environment? How does that look in, you know, the use of the town garage? If you think about what our, our workforce could look like if we continue a hybrid workforce. And then we have been working through vaccine reactions and leave administration and quarantines continue. The continued work for reforming and reimagining policing will continue through the next steps in the process, as well as the complaint process, the racial equity consultant. And we will be looking to develop our community engagement agenda for the department. And how do we look more outward-facing to engage the, the town of Brookline community? And have had those conversations with CDICR. And we have, all of the collective bargaining agreements have either expired, in the case of the Police Department, expired in 2020, or all of the others will expire at the end of Fiscal 21. So in the toughest financial situation we've had in years, we are also facing the fact that we have all of the collective bargaining agreements to negotiate at the same time. So benefits. Looking at what we have for benefits. Employee retiree, health insurance, dental insurance, life insurance, unemployment comp, workers' comp, and IOD. And then some, some other benefits that we provide to our employees, being flexible spending and voluntary benefits. So there's accident and disability insurance and some other things going on. And I put an asterisk by this because all of these things are affected by COVID. And some of the issues I know Melissa has talked about in the overview for the financial picture. But we are. So fully loaded benefits are up to $72 million, and, and there's just, there's an error on this, this slide, it should be 5.1%. All benefit direct payments, so without the, the overhead cost is 69.6 million with health insurance at roughly one-half, at 31.2 million, and retirement at 28.5. As Melissa explained in the overview last week, the projected increase for health insurance is about 6% and overall represents an 11% increase of the budget. We do not have the GIC-approved rates, those will be out mid-next month. And the highlight for, for unemployment is that the, the budget, budget is up significantly to, to five, over $500,000. So the impact on benefits is saw premium rebates. So our employees got rebates for health and dental insurance during the year. And the, we just received our dental insurance premium agreement through Fiscal 23. There'll be no increase in the cost for dental insurance for our employees or retirees. And so that will be a four-year zero-cost increase for our employees. COVID impact on the positive side is that there is no co-pays for telehealth under COVID. And as was discussed a little bit during the public comment, there is a higher mental health and support needs. And what I will say is that the waiting time for getting services is, in some cases, upwards of six months. So while there's a higher need, the access or the availability for service and support is definitely not meeting the
I would say we don't have any services if it's, if there's a six-month wait for mental health.
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, we're in Boston area as opposed to being out in, say, Western Mass where it's probably even worse than that. Here we have, thank you, Melissa.
I can ju, I can jump in and cover this party. And so for the board, this is just the changes in the, in the benefits budget. So you can see the changes that Ann alluded to, and then also we discussed a lot in detail last week. So I will just go over the, the big changes are the, the pension system, that $1.9 million following our funding schedule, group health insurance, we're assuming 6% plus the growth of 40 enrollees, 30 on the school side, 10 on the town, that's our normal assumption for growth. Ann talked about the unemployment compensation line, we're also kind of sorting through cares versus non-cares eligible payments. We're also kind of sorting through cares versus non cares eligible payments in fiscal twenty one. And then Medicare payroll tax that grows by salary rates. So that, that's the a hundred and eighty six thousand dollar increase.
One, one thing that in Melissa's presentation and is on the open gov site is looking at public safety IOD medical. One of the things we're looking at moving forward is how do we address the town's potential liability and retired employees for cancer and other job related health diagnoses? And how do we sort of proactively address that? And that is the end of my presentation and I will take your questions. I will stop screen chair.
So any questions? I guess I can start with one. So our EAP program has psychological services, I take it.
It does.
And, and is there? I mean, surely the wait time can't be six months than that.
It can be. Our EAP program is a referral. So you contact the EAP, which is administered through the group insurance commission. And you get a referral for services and then you are able to look for a provider. But I know that there are extended waits looking at, you know, four to six months for services because of the high need due to COVID, COVID related death. And just general mental health issues related to sort of COVID being at home, kids being at home is particularly critical. As far as trying to get services for them as well.
Ms. Hamilton.
Um, two questions that aren't exactly related, so bear with me. One is someone forwarded me the EEO statistics from, I think, like two thousand seventeen. I assume that those have been updated. Where might somebody find those? I know that when you were, when we were onboarding you, you had looked at the, I guess, the website that we were using in order to reach, you know, non traditional candidates. And I just kind of wanted a status on that. And then my second question has to do with transportation benefits.
So as far as the EEO data, it is published on the webpage through CDICR. And the, the EEO data is collected on the odd numbered year. So the data that's on the webpage is twenty nineteen, I believe. And so we would be looking to compile EEO data and submit it to the federal government for this, this year in twenty twenty one. So that's when we'll have later data. We also do the race data for CDICR's Employment Diversity Committee, which I don't know that they have a new chair. They've been focused on the complaint review process and racial equity work and some other things. So I don't know if that, that committee hasn't really met recently. You had another question.
Can let me jump in on that, on this issue though. We have a upcoming quarterly report from you on, on our employment statistics, correct?
Yes.
I just wanted to remind, remind everything, everyone.
So the, the second question is about, I know we have met from time to time regarding the transportation demand management, you know, plan. And I know that COVID has kind of trumped everything, but didn't know whether or not that was still kind of on your radar when hopefully things get back to maybe a new normal.
So ironically, we passed the transportation. It came before your, your body passed the transportation flexible spending account and being able to sign up for the MBTA pass program. And then COVID hit. So it was ironic that, you know, people weren't taking mass transit because they didn't want to get sick. And we went to remote work. So we did not implement it for fiscal twenty one. We have it on our agenda to, at minimum, implement the transportation component of flexible spending and then get the contract done. We have to do a contract with the MBTA for our pre-tax T passes. But I'm not sure where folks are at with taking the T currently. And so we thought it was kind of a bad timing to then roll it out and have people stay home. So we're hoping to roll that out for fiscal twenty two as a part of our annual enrollment, which will start next month.
Thank you.
Ms. Fernandez.
I'm still smiling at Heather's cat. And they saw, they saw the presentation. I'm wondering, you know, I would love at some point in the new, near future to be able to say that I, that I live and work in a community which provides twelve months of fully paid parental leave for, for the birth of, or adoption of a child. I'm wondering how our current policy stacks up, how far away our current policy is from, from that, that dream that I have.
So I love that dream and I hope to see it someday. What I will say is currently employees have access to pay parental, well, FMLA benefits for birth or adoption of a child for both spouses or both individuals, male or female. And it is the, through the use of accrued leave time. And so, for example, we have traditionally the, the birth mother. So if somebody is giving birth to a child under, under that, our traditional practice has been that they're able to go out for the full twelve weeks on accrued time use under sick time. And then the, under our policy, we have a separation for sick family. So that is care of another. And there's a defined amount of time you can take per, per year on that. And so the non birth parent usually has access to their sick family time, their A days and their vacation time to take up to twelve weeks off. Folks can choose to go longer than that. And in fact, the teachers have a two year child rearing leave that they can take. But most don't have that much time to go out paid.
What would be the, the impact if instead of, instead of taking from sick time or personal time, simply paying our employees during that time? We're doing it either way. I guess, I guess later on, they would have the benefit of taking leave and then also being able to utilize their sick time, of course. But, but is there any budget impact of, of sort of switching from our current policy to a paid policy?
Well, it would be the, the salary value of the amount of time each person takes. So if there were thirty, thirty births, we'll say, with no, no accrued time off used and they just get the time, we would have to add that into the cost of our budget because we would still owe them their accrued sick, their accrued vacation, their A days. Because they would accrue those while they're out on sort of, we'll call it free time, but it's not really free time. Out on unaccrued time with pay.
All right. And should they leave the town? We would need to, we would need to pay that out if they left the town for another job or something like that.
Yes. So if somebody goes out on, we'll use an example. Somebody goes out on maternity leave and under your provision, they get a full year's pay at their regular rate. They're still accruing time, vacation, A days, personal and, and, and sick time. They are scheduled to come back on the first of March. And on the twenty eighth of February, they submit a notice saying, I'm not coming back to work.
And by the way, I think I may have said twelve months, I meant weeks. But, but if we're and, and do a year like they do in Canada, but I meant weeks at the time.
Yeah. So, so twelve weeks, you would, you would have the, the amount of pay for those twelve weeks instead of the twelve months. Although I'm sure there are some, some folks who would love twelve months off to be with their kids while they're little people or growing into little people. So, so it would be an additional cost of the value of that time because we would end up with them not using accrued time. And I, I will say from my own personal perspective, if my husband had twelve weeks of unaccrued paid time off, we'd be divorced after the birth of our children. It just, he, he was home for two weeks and that's what he needed to do. And then he was in and out as, as needed over time, his job allowed him to do that. But yeah, I, I would, I would put that to, to the, to the birth moms as to whether they want their, their husband's home or their, their partner's home for twelve weeks after the birth of a child.
I'd, I'd love to see, you know, I'm only one board member and maybe we, we can have a more fleshed out conversation about this in the future. But I'd love to see if, you know, where, at some point where the other board members are on this. And if this is something that we think is, is a goal we should be working toward, that we agree is a goal we should be working toward and to try to find a path to get there that also obviously doesn't blow up the budget or anything like that. But maybe that's, that's something, a conversation we can have in the future. But I hope we can, because I, I think, I think we can get there and, and, you know, I, I know.
It would need to be bargained and what the, you know, in, in the collective bargaining process, what the value of that would be.
Right.
You know, I think Afsmi would have a different value to it than the teachers' union versus, you know, mid, mid managers who aren't in a union and things like that as to how we do that. So, you know, as, as we go forward and looking at that, I'm, I'm open to looking at it. I think, you know, obviously for fiscal twenty two, it's, it's not, not on the table for discussion. But to look at how we can be more family friendly is, is part of the, part of the goal and sort of part of the, the transformational versus transactional.
Thank you.
Ms. Helen.
So I'm wondering whether is there any system in Massachusetts? I mean, it's been so long since I had a child. Is there any system in Massachusetts now for parents, mother and father to collect unemployment insurance if they go out on unpaid leave?
Well, the, the challenge with that is that they're not unemployed. They're on a leave of absence from their employer. So they wouldn't qualify for unemployment in that case. They would have to basically terminate employment in, instead of going on unpaid leave. And, and they would have to assume their, their hundred percent of their health insurance on Cobra as well as a bunch of other things that, that they would have challenges with. When parents, whether male or female, are out on FMLA leave and even in an unpaid status, we do continue the, the rate of, of pay for paid leave. And then when they go on an unpaid status, they assume a hundred percent of the cost of the health insurance.
The reason I ask this is I, I just learned that in California, the system will pay for parents, some parent, a parent leave calling it unemployment, but I think they actually, you know, when they give it to you, they say it's a FM, a family medical leave kind of thing. So in the state, it's categorized as unemployment and federal tax purposes is categorized as unemployment, but this actually isn't unemployment. And
That would require a state law change.
Okay. Any other questions?
Um, I, I had hopefully a quick one. I know when I worked for the state, we would frequently get emails from HR saying, you know, we're establishing a leave bank for an employee who got sick or maybe in this case adopted a child. Do we do that sort of thing?
So right now we have a sick bank, a special one for, for AFSMI. And then one for non-union employees. And that is for catastrophic unforeseen instances. So we had someone, for example, got in a motorcycle accident and ended up in ICU in a coma for three weeks and then having to recover from that. Those kind of things is what it's established for. It is not, to my knowledge, and Leslie can chime in, that we haven't had, had someone apply for that for FMLA in the, for the birth of a child.
Okay. Did you want to add something with?
Just one other thing you had made mention of having a conversation about work from home.
Yes.
So I, I mentioned it in passing as one of our, our objectives for fiscal twenty two. And, and part of what this looks at is multifaceted. We, we have our challenges in recruiting. We don't require people to live here. So we have people commuting from as far away as Ipswich and the Cape and other places. And yes, that's their choice. But if we are having problems finding appropriate candidates for some of our key positions, where we're able to provide a work from home option. And again, as, as someone mentioned, is to not have it be five days a week. But, you know, some combination of two to three days flexibility to provide some work, life balance for folks as well. We're looking at that. We're looking at what a contract would look like for employees who are designated as, as work from home eligible. As far as the type of supervision that would be granted, the work expectations, the ti, you know, the times of day and things like that. And providing some additional resources to our managers and supervisors on how to manage a remote workforce. So one of the things we found through COVID is that some communication and management challenges where, where folks don't have specific skills, those things get, get highlighted and made bigger as a result of managing a remote workforce. Whether it's a type of communication or the style of communication. And so one of the things we're looking at is how do we support our managers and our departments to, one, get the work done that they need to? Two, provide flexibility for, for employment purposes on the employee side. And then the third is going to be really looking at the whole thing with an equity lens so that you don't have favoritism of, you know, picking, I like this person and I don't like that person or, or their work quality. And, and so they could have the same job title but aren't given the same flexibility because of sort of interpersonal specifics. So we want to make sure it's tied to the job as far as being eligible, that there's a contract and expectations that are set, that there's management structure in place and skill sets updated for whoever needs them. And, you know, you look at, you had, you had Gina on from, from Treasury and she's got, you know, the forward facing Treasury office, which never, you know, was never really closed to the public. People would like knock on the door or call the office saying, I have a tax payment. You know, and have them come in and do that. But you have the backend division of purchasing, which really doesn't see a whole lot of traffic or the, the comptroller's office, which doesn't see a lot of external traffic. And how do you make those, those assignments within the same department amongst those divisions and make sure it's equitable? So, you know, we're looking at all of that as, in a comprehensive way as part of collective bargaining, but also as part of how we're going to run our post-COVID new reality.
Very interesting. Any, any other questions from the select board?
Leslie has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry. My, my screen doesn't show this. Is Noble.
Uh, no, I think I was just going to jump in. There was a question that we, was asked about the FMLA leave. If we've ever offered time off for, you know, FMLA leave or a birth of a child under the sick leaves banks that we have, the special sick leave banks. And we, we have it not for the birth of a child, but we have, for example, for a very, very ill child. So it was a young child who was very sick. And, and, you know, fortunately, we were able to assist the employee there. So.
Okay. Anything else? Thank you. Ms. Bragan is Noble. Okay, next. Our favorite department. The Select Board. Mr. Casanova Davis.
Good evening, Justin Casanova Davis, Assistant Town Administrator.
I'm going to share my screen. So tough act to follow and, and the wonderful pictures here of the HR staff, which have worked very hard during this time. But the Select Board budget for fiscal year 22 is eight hundred and twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and ten dollars. Uh, you'll see two variances in our lines, one in salaries of nine thousand dollars, eighty, uh, nine thousand eighty-one dollars. And that's for the normal steps, uh, for staff within the office. And then you'll see another variance in the services line of minus about forty-six thousand dollars. And that is the reduction in the fifty thousand dollars that was allocated for the Police Reform Committee work in fiscal year 21. So that, uh, funding is being removed in the fiscal year 22 budget. And then we're allocating, uh, four thousand dollars for, uh, boards and commission software uh, in our professional technical services line. So overall, the Select Board budget is being reduced by thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and nineteen dollars, which represents about four and a half percent uh, decrease. This is sort of our FTs within the office. We have seven people. I'll highlight a little bit that last year in fiscal year 20, we had seven and a half, uh, people. Um, and this is a nice little graphic from Open Gov. I'll, I'll touch into Open Gov at the end of this presentation if you, uh, does me, Mr. Chair. Um, this just gives, you know, the percentage of salaries for each position within the department. And so a couple of highlights, uh, this is for the office, the, the board in the office has worked really hard during this period and there's a multitude of highlights, so I just want to touch a few. Um, one is the part-time position that we removed in fiscal year 21. It's part of our COVID reductions. It's still remaining on budget in fiscal year 22. Um, happy to announce that we have filled the cannabis coordinator officially. So that's a very important highlight for us. Um, and as I mentioned before, we're budgeting about four thousand for the fiscal year 22 budget and for the boards and commission software. And I know Select Board and Devin are working really hard on this. And this, this is an important highlight because this will give us some real-time data, uh, on the website to see boards and commission vacancies and allow us to start filling those positions a little bit, uh, quicker. And so we're working with the town clerk department to get that done. Uh, I'd like to highlight that, you know, this office, along with the finance department, has administered the CARES Act. Uh, this has been a group effort, you know, we've worked with purchasing controls, we've worked with building and so forth. But, you know, through the CARES, uh, Act, we've submitted timely reports for reporting. We've gotten every, um, submission that we've submitted to the state for funding and we're being very aggressive and diligent with our work there and eventually FEMA and making sure we get reimbursed for a lot of the COVID expenses that were eligible to get reimbursed for. Another highlight is, um, I'd like to highlight is the streamlining of licensing applications. You know, Tiffany has worked, uh, exceptionally hard this year to, to sort of redo the PDFs, ask more pertinent questions, make the PDFs editable, just to make the process easier for those who submit these applications. But also she's been working with, um, IT, uh, for the backend systems to update Acela, to sort of make the renewal process in December a lot easier. And I think we saw that in December, that the renewal packet was a lot better than what it was previously. Um, and so also, you know, the office has supported the work of the police reform committees. Devin's been, you know, managing those committees and those, uh, those efforts and supporting the Select Board in that effort. And another important highlight is the town school partnership. Although the town has always had the town school partnership, just as the town administrator and deputy town administrator had mentioned their, um, initial PowerPoint, the budget. We've reformed the sort of formula to make it simplified, but we've also sort of tried to emphasize with the board meeting more regularly. So we're using, um, uh, them to provide budgetary direction and provide better communication in the town school partnership. And then, uh, throughout COVID, you know, the office is supporting boards and commissions throughout the virtual transition. That's Devin, that's, you know, the entire office, Kate as well. Um, making sure we set up the meetings, helping with the Zoom, um, Zoom process and so forth. So those are some of the highlights. For the office, if you'll does me, uh, Mr. Chair, I just want to click uh, into the Open Gov story. I'm, I'm going to start here, just so people can see this process. I know that, you know, Open Gov, we're in the second year of the process, so this is the interactive budget book. And here, all these links are clickable. Okay, so I'm going to go to the Select Board story. And if you click this story, this will lead you to the page. It provides a description of the objectives and accomplishments uh, that, uh, for the, the board this past year. And, uh, this is also something that we mentioned when we did, uh, when the board voted to approve this. This is something that we want to tie into our indicators, which are at the bottom of this as well. But all these reports and this data here, a lot of the, a lot of these graphs here are actually clickable. So, and this will allow you to dive deeper into some of the data. So if you click this one in particular, this will lead you to the Select Board. Um, Budget Line Report, and this is this is where you'll get some various data. You can change graphs, can dive in, you can see the salary is about ninety-seven percent of the, of the, uh, departments. Sort of budget allocation. But then you can see here, these lines here, all of these you can sort of expand. You'll see the salary services, but you expand it all and then you can see exactly, you know, how these items are portioned in various lines that they are. So, uh, that's something that we want to highlight and want people to know that this, this data is out there. You can download this data, you can download an image, you can download an Excel if you want to really dive deep into your own analysis. And, um, you know, it's the second year, we're making adjustments and trying to improve and we're going to continue to work with Open Gov. Melissa and I are on the customer advisory board and we're going to continue to work with them to try and make this process better. Um, and, um, continue there. Um, I don't know if town administrator, deputy town administrator wants to add anything, but otherwise I'll stop.
Can I, can I add one thing? Uh, one thing that, uh, board members should be aware of, because they're not already, is that in our packet, um, you have live, uh, links to Open Gov in the materials. I mean, I found out inadvertently, but, uh, matter of fact, disrupted what I was doing, but you know, they are there and yeah, we can use our packets to begin to get familiar with, um, uh, this little toy here.
That, that was one of the, uh, enhancements that Open Gov did this year is that as part of the budget book process, when we export a lot of this information out, we include a hyperlink so that you can click right there and get to this information.
How would we recognize these, these links in our?
A, a, a bit of it is just go over and click it. Uh, you'll see, you'll see your, uh, your mouse or whatever change here. For example, all of these here are all Open Gov data. You can primarily tell that scene Open Gov, but something like this, this is an Excel one. You see there, there's nothing to click, but all these other ones you can click.
Any other questions?
Uh, Mr. Chair, if I could have an opportunity to just to, uh, uh, give some credit, uh, to, to the members of the staff, and I thought Anne did a great job highlighting those individuals. So I just want to briefly say that, uh, although Melissa and I get a lot of the credit, uh, especially around the big, you know, budget submission, uh, I wanted to acknowledge, uh, Justin's, uh, activities, especially he mentioned and kind of glossed over his, uh, his activities to, uh, comply with the CARES funding. That's not an easy task. There's a lot of details and Justin has been right on top of that all along and makes me feel confident the town is securing whatever it can and is doing so in the, in the way that, uh, uh, the, the, the local granting agency needs. I want to mention, uh, Kate McGilvery. Kate has really kept our office going during the remote times, you know. Uh, we still get calls, we still get a lot of emails and Kate's the one who is really controlling a lot of that communication going by. Uh, Tiffany has been mentioned about her, her work on, uh, the licensing, which she has gotten so much better. And of course, we know we're working on, uh, lodging houses over the next year. And then, uh, not the la- last, but not least, as Devon feels, Devon is really, I would say, is probably, um, singularly responsible more than anyone else for the town being able to, um, convert and transition to our public meetings being online. And that is not an easy task. Uh, we're constantly asked how it is that our community, um, you know, can have all these public meetings. Um, and, uh, Devon is usually the person we send them to because she's really, uh, been instrumental in, in the whole process of, uh, setting, setting these things up and training and all that. So this has been a rough year. I, I really wanted, um, uh, acknowledgement of those staff members. And, uh, as Justin mentions, we're excited to just bring on board Monique Baldwin, who will serve as the town's cannabis licensing coordinator and join our office for the first time. I believe she started yesterday.
Good. And Ms. Allison.
Uh, along that same vein, I know, uh, if I remember correctly, the BFAC report acknowledged, you know, how much work goes through the Select Board office, especially when it comes to the budget. And had said that another FTE was probably required. I know that, you know, our budget is better than we thought it was going to be, but we're not, you know, at the kind of funding that we, we had become accustomed to, maybe two years ago. Um, what are your thoughts on that recommendation, especially in light of COVID, you know, maybe longer term?
Uh, I think it's more than one FTE, um, to do, uh, to, to even begin to, uh, address some of, uh, the underlying, uh, recommendations of, of the BFAC report. I think I've mentioned at least two budget analysts. Um, couldn't fund them in fiscal 22. Um, there are a lot of demands on the town's budget, um, which you'll hear throughout, um, the, the, uh, the, the next few months. So, uh, we're hoping, uh, that the, you know, that the budget would allow for some of these investments, but right now I, I don't see it.
Hey, any other questions, Mr. Fernandez?
Sure, um, Justin, you mentioned the board and commission software. Can you just talk a little bit more about, um, that and how that's, um, how that would be helpful?
Yeah, so I think we've, this office and Devon in particular, we've been working with the town clerk's office to sort of take a look at some different software providers. And so this software and Devon and I will actually be meeting with the company on Thursday to get further information. But the software will sort of, it will automate it, automate the process for, uh, applying for boards and commissions. And so we'll put it in a database and we'll, we'll put in all this information and so forth. It'll be an implementation process. Sort of lay out our boards and commissions, update the data there. And then as there's vacancies and so forth, we'll provide a real-time tracking basis on the board and commission webs, uh, the websites, uh, that we have on the town website. And then that will also ping our staff, allow us to know, all right, there's a vacancy, this is something that we need to forward to the board. You'll sort of make that process a lot quicker, a quicker and more time, timelier process.
Wow, that's great. Sounds like a good giant leap forward. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we're, we're excited. Hopefully we can work to get, get this done and, uh, and make sure it's a great product.
All right. Any other questions? Mr. Menz, go ahead.
Um, yes, thank you for a really good presentation. I hope people realize how lean the, uh, the top of the town's, uh, administration is, uh, this, this, this Select Board, um, part of the budget. Um, I know it's easy for us to say who are on the Select Board, um, but it really is. I mean, it's remarkable that with seven employees, uh, the, the amount of work that goes through, this is a hands-on, uh, department. Uh, uh, you know, all hands on deck, uh, all the time, as far as I can tell. And I, I want people to have confidence that, uh, this is a really hardworking department, full of talented people. Um, having said that, um, there's just one position that I, I admit I didn't even know existed. Um, and it's called Arts Council Coordinator, but then by some sort of quirk of how the data is, um, is listed in, in the budget, in the document, it says zero, but seven thousand, two hundred dollars. So is that just basically, uh, some sort of, uh, fu- funding for activities of the Arts Council?
It's a, it's a stipend for our Arts Council Coordinator, Julian Jackson. So I don't know where you see the zero, but I'll take a look, but it's seventy-two hundred dollars stipend that Julian.
But I think this comes from a non-budget sort of revenue.
Exactly. There's an offset. There's an offset. Yeah.
So John, um, the Arts Council Administrator essentially administers the state grant and the town is required to have a matching funding source. So we provide an offset that comes from the BAA trust fund.
Okay, I'll nod my head like I get that.
Funding for, it's the funding that the town receives each year to reimburse us for costs related to, uh, the Boston Marathon and it goes into a fund. And, uh, we, uh, occasionally allocate funding from, from that source of money.
So, uh, given COVID, um, I mean, uh, uh, could, could I assume that there was probably a lot of money not spent, um, because the marathon didn't?
Happy received.
Uh, they didn't give us the money that year.
Oh, they didn't? Okay, fine. Okay, good. End of questions for me.
Didn't spend the money and they didn't give it to us.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Thank you, uh, Justin, and thank you, uh, um, Melissa. Really appreciated. Great, uh, presentation. Of course, thank you Mel and, and Devin and Kate, who I work with a lot, uh, signing documents and dealing with minutes many times. So, you know, we appreciate, uh, the staff of our office, our Select Board Office, uh, which is really, uh, the heart of, uh, town, the town government. So.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Okay, uh, finally, uh, well, not finally, but next, uh, we have an update on fossil fuel free, um, initiative. Looks like Maria Morelli is, uh, here to, um, yes. It was that presentation?
Good evening, uh, Mr. Chair. I'll, I'll share my screen in a moment. I just wanted to acknowledge that the lead for this project, my colleague Victor Pennock, who's a planner in the planning department, has a debilitating migraine, unfortunately, and can't present tonight. But I just wanted to acknowledge his tremendous work. Uh, you don't see him here, but his excellent work will be on full display. So I, I just wanted to acknowledge that. And I will share my screen. Okay, so you should be able to see that. And, um, so to begin, where do we start? Um, we really love doing this project. This was, you know, sustainability is a priority for the planning department. And we really just relished having a role in, in working on mechanisms that we could implement to advance fossil fuel free. Um, we do have as a result of this report, a full range of interesting, um, ideas, including zoning mechanisms that are feasible and effective to advance fossil fuel free. I do want to acknowledge that there is a lot of movement at the state right now. So there's a climate bill uh, that was, um, sent back from, you know, Governor Baker to the legislature with amendments. And we expect some negotiating there. I think one of the things that might be on the table is a net zero stretch code, however net zero gets defined. One of the provisions could or could not be, um, a, a provision that would allow municipalities to ban onsite combustion. Um, but nonetheless, this is an opportunity for municipalities, I think, to be vocal about incentives uh, and, and any other aspects, um, pertaining to that bill. So the background, what was the impetus here? As we all know, Warren Article 21, uh, which was unanimously, unanimously voted by town meeting, was, uh, dis- disapproved by the Attorney General. And she was sympathetic, I think, to the cause, um, but did say that, um, because it was in violation of the state building code and published, um, public, um, uh, plumbing code as well as DPU, she recommended using an alternative strategy, something, uh, an alternative to a mandate and, and strongly had suggested or pointed the way to incentives. So the original petitioners for Warner Article 21 had proposed the idea of tying zoning incentives for dimensional bonuses to fossil fuel-free buildings. So the Select Board's charge, uh, was really to analyze this further, to see this from different facets. Um, what might be the advantages, what might, how could we think outside the box? Um, and what might be, be the impacts of something like this? So our methodology was to focus on five criteria to assess zoning incentives. We really wanted to look at, oh, what would be the widest range of applicability? Um, could this be something that could be done, done town-wide or would it have really limited applicability? Was it likely to be utilized? What would the impact be on the built environment? How practical would it be? And what are the synergy with the town's policy goals? So we, we zoned in on about five big areas, dimensional bonuses, FAR waivers, um, possible parking, uh, requirement reductions and housing, housing density bonuses and expedited permitting. As part of this, we interviewed several developers who have, have a lot of land in, in Brookline and, and they really span the kind of development they do, really spans different building typologies from single-family to multi-family, ten units or fewer to maybe three hundred units. And they're mostly Brookline-based, uh, with some Boston, um, based, but they really do have strong Brookline. And they're mostly Brookline-based, uh, with some Boston, um, base, but they really do have strong Brookline ties. There was a detailed survey of our zoning bylaw, as well as data that we gathered, uh, from recent permitting, and in general, uh, looking at recent state action and sustainability practices in general. So to step back a little bit, I know you know this, this is really the foundation or the premise of the Brookline's own climate action plan. But if we think about the five foundations for zero carb, um, zero carbon building policies, buildings contribute, as you know, almost forty percent of global emissions, um, annually, and so to to fully decarbonize by twenty fifty, we need core strategies like the ones you see here. Of course, high energy efficiency makes the next three components to the right more achievable. Embodied carbon versus operational carbon pertains to how buildings are are the carbon that's emitted through the manufacture of those building materials. So you might not think of preservation, historic preservation, as having a key of sustained or being a key sustainability strategy. But if you think about, um, what the carbon that's emitted into demolishing a building or building a new building, you see that embodied carbon really does have to be a key strategy. There was a report about two years ago that came out that we won't be able to meet our twenty fifty decarbonization target if we don't make embodied carbon, um, part of our strategy. So one of the things that you want to consider when you're looking at incentives is a possible, you know, cost nexus. So, you know, how much of a lift is it is is it to really, you know, put heat pumps on a building and and so forth? So we wanted to look at some recent studies that were focused on Boston buildings. Um, I'm going to talk about single-family, but that also include what? Single-family and multifamily ranging from three to six stories. About October twenty twenty, the Rocky Mountain Institute, uh, came out with a study that focused on new single-family construction in Boston and compared, uh, construction and operational costs with gas-based, um, buildings. And what what the findings were is that there's cost parity with gas, and stretch code is sufficient. So I really want to stress that. You you don't really have to do something, you know, more more extreme like passive house, although there is a passive house path, uh, in the stretch code. There really isn't much consensus of now in the industry about passive house for single-family, uh, construction to it, um, to use heat pumps. Regarding multifamily, there was a really interesting study produced by the City of Boston's Department of Neighborhood Development regarding zero emissions, and they were looking at different thing assemblies, comparing heat pumps to to gas, to gas boilers for different building typologies. And what they found there is that passive house really was paramount. Um, of course, D N D does a lot of affordable housing. But if you think about what the operational costs are for electricity, especially if tenants are paying the electric bill, there could be some sticker shock there. They're not going to see the the benefits of like no gas, um, bills. So that's where it's really is important, not only in terms of operational costs, um, but because there are going to be so many users, there are going to be additional, um, heating and cooling demands on that building. Passive house is really, uh, recommended, not not only through that report, but by the consultants that or the the experts that we talked to at Mass Clean Energy Center and New Ecology. Um, I do want to point out here about available incentives, because we looked at that as well. We certainly didn't want to be redundant, and we wanted to highlight where there might be gaps or opportunities. So Mass Save does have really generous incentives for mass, uh, passive house feasibility for new multifamily and new commercial instruction. And that ranges from everything from feasibility modeling all the way to certification and performance bonuses, really the whole spectrum. Um, there might be a few gaps there, but there is no commitment to actually follow through with the certification. So this is basically, uh, free technical, um, services. Now regarding retrofits, uh, this is really the big nut. This is the challenge. One of the things we did have to ask, and we just didn't have time to to survey homeowners, but we wanted to know if home homeowners would actually bundle an H VAC conversion with a project that would be typically going before the Board of Appeals. And although we couldn't survey, our hypothesis is that they probably wouldn't. They're more likely to pace their budgets or pace, you know, big ticket items like this with mass save incentives that are available. So we really didn't think that zoning incentives would really be a practical, uh, incentive. We also don't really have information on the adoption rate, uh, for mass house heat pumps. Um, that might clue us in to, you know, are people still a little skittish? Do they need more education? Um, but that's an area we'd like to understand a little bit better, uh, to to really promote, uh, heat pump adoption. One thing that is pretty clear, you don't see the kinds of weatherization incentives, uh, at Mass Save to bring older homes up to stretch code requirements. So if you were to, as the R M I study showed, you could live in a really comfortable, um, stretch code, uh, assembly home with heat pumps. But if you if you have a house that was built in nineteen seventy, there are going to be air infiltration, you know, thresholds that are not going to be up to the requirements set by the stretch code. You're going to see have a really uncomfortable home with heat pumps. It's going to be really draft drafty. You'll have, um, you know, um, you'll see some higher costs. So we would like to see Mass Save actually provide the incentives for the different, you know, and if you're thinking if you're replacing your roof or your windows or your siding, those are the kinds of things that really reduce that 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 heat loss, that air, um, that air exchange. And so that would help, I think, retrofits, uh, a great deal. We also wanted to think about how we could disincentivize demolition. So, you know, as I spoke about embodied carbon, we didn't want incentives to be so lopsided that we were we were rewarding new construction and overlooking the opportunities with retrofits. That's the and along the same lines, multifamily, there are more variables than with new construction. It's not insurmountable. I don't, I don't want anyone to think that we were actually negative negative at all about this. Um, we're actually encouraging really putting a retrofit strategy for decarbonization to the forefront, because that is the big nut to crack. And there really are some interesting studies that are being done on passive house retrofits, um, on multifamily around like four and five and six stories, or we're actually four and five stories that we're following, uh, those labs. One thing that was really interesting to us is that federal law doesn't really incentivize the kind of energy upgrades that property owners want to make. And so there is a bipartisan bill that might that might pass. I actually think it's it's a great idea. It's a long time coming. And then I, a- along with the the retrofits that mass or the the incentives that Mass Save provides, there really isn't the kind of deeper energy retrofits available on a on a wider scale, not not even talking about passive house, but just deeper, um, energy retrofits. And that's got to be part of the solution. I don't think the the town can certainly make up that gap, but we can certainly advocate at the state, uh, level. Some of the safeguards to address, uh, we were talking to developers who they were very knowledgeable. They know there's a whole varying, you know, spectrum about what they understand about electric buildings. They know the technology. Some understood the alt, um, optimal path to to really getting there. But all of them were really concerned about the misconceptions that they feel buyers and renters have. And that was something that actually did play into their decisions, maybe not to go the electric route, or maybe they were using, say, they weren't using, um, they were using code minimum, uh, to to do their their at their cost, uh, analysis. So they really weren't seeing the benefits or how electric buildings could be, uh, cost-effective or operationally, um, cost-effective. The other concern is really on the flip side is, um, you know, the, if you don't have any energy efficiency targets, there's the possibility that someone is not going to know what that best practice is, and they could electrify an inefficient building, which is really not going to help the cause here. Uh, the other thing, if we're going to be talking about that of that foundation for zero carbon buildings, let's make sure we can actually, uh, get people to plan renewable energy. So if we have seventy-five of of Brooklyn, seventy-five percent of Brookline's land area is single-family, and roughly the typical building typologies around four stories, that those building typologies are very conducive to renewable energy, and that should be part of the of the planning, say, the green building standards, if we were to apply them. Uh, so, uh, again, we don't want to create an imbalance. We do want to elevate, uh, embodied carbon, and we do want to have some, um, do advocacy at the state level to really ensure that there's a full range of financial support, uh, for these different, um, categories. So in short, uh, the bad news is zoning incentives are not a recommended course of action. There are some challenges to the scope of applicability and effectiveness. In our own, uh, zoning bylaw sections, there are provisions that do provide relief that really, um, wouldn't make, say, some of these zoning incentives really competitive. Also, under state law, under forty A, under section six, you have, um, you know, property with a an existing non-conformity. That non-conformity can be extended if there isn't going to be detriment to the neighborhood. That is a very powerful incentive. Um, and so I, it just wouldn't be competitive with any, you know, zoning incentives that you might be providing. Also, forty B. You know, in the last five years, the the Board of Appeals has permitted over eight hundred thousand square feet of housing under chapter forty B. That's an incredible volume. In comparison, that same board has permitted maybe thirty-six thousand square feet under forty A. So, you know, that building typology, um, that that medium, it's that median-sized building is probably four and a half stories under forty B. So clearly, developers are using forty B to circumvent, uh, what they feel is restrictive zoning, and that is really the impetus of a the multifamily study that we are looking at. So there really is a limited, um, connection between most zoning incentives and fossil fuel-free construction, construction. The other thing that we're concerned about, again, is that imbalance. We don't want to have imbalanced zoning incentives that, uh, prioritized or inadvertently make it easier to demolish. And we also want to ensure that we're not talking about electrification alone without energy efficiency targets, embodied carbon, if it's applicable, and a renewal, and a renewable energy plan. So in short, a blanket approach to applying zoning, uh, mechanisms really isn't going to work. Uh, it did mention that we do have several studies in the pipeline. And one of those is the multifamily study. There's the Lower Boylston Study. Uh, we feel that these lands, uh, these land use studies would lend themselves to an overlay district mechanism. So if we were to recommend any zoning changes, rather than submit them as zoning amendments, they can be tied to the overlay district. Because you have the underlying zoning, what you are doing is you are providing the property owners it in that district with a choice to go with either the underlying zoning, no fossil fuel-free standards, or the overlay district, and that would have attached to it those green building standards. That's something that we feel is feasible, and it's something that could be, um, really plausible. I wanted to keep, you know, just point out that any zoning for the overlay would be derived from land use studies. So if there's any concern about neighborhood conservation, redevelopment, or any other priorities for affordable housing, fossil fuel-free, um, standards wouldn't be in conflict. So they would be attached to other standards that we might have, we might find suitable for that study area. Of course, there's going to be high potential for multifamily and commercial districts, and unfortunately, not for those single-family and two-family districts. One thing we really do feel needs more study is identifying the gaps, um, that are, uh, you know, available at the state level through mass save incentives. And and we really feel like the first course of action should be to advocate, just because there is so much movement going on now with the Climate Action Bill. One opportunity we see is that we are seeing lots of demolition, uh, in the last ten years. I think half of the full demolition review cases have been, um, on his, you know, historic, historically significant properties. We don't necessarily know if they actually end up being demolished, but that might be an opportunity during during those twelve-month or eighteen-month stays to maybe provide financial incentives at the local level. Maybe there's something through the Community Preservation Act. If there were funding available, maybe it could be tied to fossil fuel-free standards. Education, without a doubt, it is paramount to overcome a lot of the misconceptions that people have. And we feel here too, even though studies are great, case studies are even better. So there are lots of success stories there. I think there are developers who are doing great work. We just have to have some peer influencers exchange some of that that knowledge. And again, I will can't repeat it enough, but having a retrofit strategy, uh, that is the big nut. Passive house really isn't possible for multifamily, but we would like to see deeper, going beyond stretch code for multifamily. And how could that be possible for retrofits? In addition, because demolition, uh, is is important, uh, it seems to be really a significant trend in Brookline. And because an embodied carbon policy is an important part of our cap strategy, uh, we would highly recommend drafting an embodied carbon policy. So recommended next steps. Number one, this is something we can do right now. We can prepare those green building guidelines, and we can apply them. If we had an overlay district, we would already have them ready. We can apply them right now, uh, under design review in section five oh nine in our bylaw. We have community and environmental impact standards. They're not really toothy, um, but having something specific would would communicate our values. It's not enforceable, but again, it does provide a basis for our boards to negotiate. And clearly, advocacy at the state level, this is really an opportune time, identifying gaps in mass save incentives, plan education. Uh, again, I think it'd be great to have maybe some advisory councils exchanging information. I think, we definitely have developers who are already signing up for that. Um, they're just, they just want us to know when we, um, you know, just when we'll be doing that. Again, drafting an embodied, a carbon policy, and you're working with the preservation planners and the preservation commission, and then really thinking through, uh, with the new Assistant Director of Sustainability, um, planning, uh, retrofit strategies. So that is pretty much, um, it. Um, I didn't know if you wanted to go over anything, or if you had any questions?
Any questions from the board? I mean, I I have one question. I'm still, and this came up in a, uh, discussion of a forty B. And that is so-called embedded carbon. Um, I guess I don't understand why, for example, the carbon in a building, um, uh, you know, uh, should be maintained as opposed to replacing it with a more efficient building. You know, given that seems to me, my my uneducated, you know, view is that the only real, uh, carbon release issue is, uh, is, um, you know, that, uh, where you put it, um, you know, where you put the debris.
Well, to answer that question, so what embodied carbon means, it has to do with the the carbon that's emitted in creating the building materials. So embodied carbon, um, so if you look at a building, what it takes to construct a building, there was carbon emitted to, you know, put up the found, you know, dig the found a excavate, put in that foundation. It's embodied. That's why we like to preserve embodied carbon. So it pertains to how the the materials are manufactured and transported. So if you're going to demolish a building, you're introducing, you're, you know, there are more carbon emissions. If you've got to rebuild it, there are more carbon emissions. Again, if more carbon is emitted because you have to.
But if you replace a building, uh, heated by coal, just take a ridiculous example, uh, with a building that is fully electrified with, um, solar panels and and or the sustainable building, uh, that's going to have a payback over, you know, five-year period. Why, why, what, what? What, what, why would you care about?
Yeah, so that's. Well, because what we, what we would do is we would look at life cycle impacts. So there are very interesting studies that show. Um, if you have a high performance building, um, you know, they, um. There are actually studies that are showing what the operational, um. You know, carbon dioxide is and what comparing it with the embodied carbon. So you might think at first blush. That the embodied carbon isn't going to be a big part of that because we just think about operational carbon, right? But if we were to ask for life cycle assessments, look at the whole. You know, the whole piece, what does it mean to actually demolish this building and replace it? You might actually see that. You know, a new building that's that's, you know, high performance could actually emit more carbon than, say, a code minimum building. Where there might be, um, you know, embodied carbon preserved. So we can, we can show those studies to you. There's, there's actually some excellent papers. I can refer and I'll post on our website. Um, that will get more discussion because it's not easy for people, I think, to understand it unless they see some some graphs.
Ms. Heller.
So I think, um, this is where the concept, the retrofitting concept come in, count, comes in. And in link to what I talked about earlier at the beginning of the meeting, I don't know if you were here, Maria, but. Um, I was describing this pilot by nation, which we hope will be by national grid. Every source already has one. It's, the concept has been developed by Audrey Schuman and her crew at heat. And it it's a way of, uh. Retrofitting, uh, buildings with geothermal. Using, and and I'm not sure I said this before, but one of the goals is to not have, uh. National Grid be or ever source be tearing up the gas pipes in the street. And putting in a whole new infrastructure. They would use that infrastructure. To pump water, hot water or co- or cooling water. To the various buildings. And the one, the one thing you would have to, uh, change out. In the buildings is, uh, making sure that you have the appliances. Uh, like, uh, oven, the the range, the, um. Kind of cooking facilities, um, that run on electricity. So, um, but. The this geo, this GeoMicro unit, which is what, uh, which is what they're calling it, you know, my, micro district.
Right.
The advantage of retrofitting all of these different buildings. In addition, once you establish one. There's a capacity to increase it to other buildings in the neighborhood.
Yeah, that's, it's a beautiful.
You know, say, a corner or a a block or two or three blocks around Coolidge Corner. Then you could just go us, go out like spokes on a wheel.
Yeah, just district energy. A beautiful thing.
Red go set those other buildings.
Yeah, that's, that's really.
And it would be. Excuse me, a much more efficient way of getting. Fossil fuel free buildings than tearing down buildings and, um. And replacing them because the process of tearing them down is very carbon heavy. As is the process of building them, at least right now. Uh, you know, maybe in twenty fifty, we we will have invented ways to. Use machinery that don't rely on gasoline and can and be operated on electric, electricity and. We have a clean grid and fine, but we're not there yet. We're a long way from that. So to tear back down buildings and to. And to, uh, build a new one is very carbon intensive. Um, and members of the Climate Action Committee have actually recognized that and talked about it in our meeting. So. Um, that's one another reason I'm so excited about this idea of, uh, the GeoMicro districts.
That is exciting.
Ms. Heller.
Just hoping that you might go into a little bit more detail as to why, um, you you guys concluded that zoning incentives. Were not the the path forward.
Right. So on a couple of levels, um, so one is the competition from, say, forty A. Um, the Dietrich ruling, uh, just provides much more generous incentives. Some of the incentives that we we talked about, um, or say, like the housing density ones. You'd really have to double FAR to really be, to make it economically appealing to a developer. And the reason for that is. They've got a sweet spot in their mind for, say, a a unit size. If it or, you know, a single family, a a unit size. If you've got a district where, like a single family district where the FAR is point three five and you're increasing it by. To maybe point three eight. No one is going to build two units, um, with that FAR. They're going to want to double the FAR because the sweet spot might be. Like a twenty-five hundred square foot unit. Um, so, um, also, I think on the multifamily side. You know, one thing that we're looking at is why doesn't our zoning work in our multifamily and commercial districts? And a lot of it is like the FARs just don't work with the building envelopes. So even like a. Twenty percent increase just isn't enough. I mean, you've really got to see FAR like around between two point five to three. To actually build a four-story building. So you really need. Incentives don't work. zoning that doesn't work. That's on the multifamily and commercial side. So that's. And then on the single family side, it's just the existing incentives are far too generous. You know, what's what's available, available to people now is just far too generous.
Great, thank you. Any other questions from the board? Mr. Wes Scott.
Uh, I'm not, I I believe me, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but, uh, I I did, uh, hear. Uh, and I think I heard correctly, quite an emphasis on the importance of focusing on state. Legislation and, um, you know, the state level of addressing this problem. And in that regard, um. I'm, I'm actually going to give an alert to Chair Green, um, and to Town Administrator Kleckner. Um, there's a petition circulating which endeavors to enlist municipalities. In, uh, applying some polite pressure to, uh. The legislature and to Governor Baker to come to terms on the. Legislation that, uh, Baker, the Governor Baker ended up, uh, vetoing and it's now back in the legislature and there's. You know, an effort to find ways to, um, deal with his veto and get the legislation back to him and to be signed. It is, uh. But I don't know if you got a chance to see the email that came to all of us earlier today. Requesting that Brookline join, join those petitioners. But, um, what what does the select board have to do just to follow through on the request that we become one of the petitioners, uh? In this.
Well, uh, we would, we would actually ask the board, so we would, um, that's gonna be a topic of our reading on Thursday, our agenda.
You muted yourself now.
I did. Thank you, Nancy. Um, so we would ask the board to consider it and then take a vote.
And so maybe we could, uh, do that next Tuesday.
Right.
That'd be great.
That's good.
Sure, um. So earlier on, we were talking a lot, I think, about sort of this, this idea of embodied emissions and tear downs and built ups and things like that, but. But but it seems to me like, eh, what we're talking about. Um, in addition to some of the ideas that that I think Nancy was talking about, which which sound really great and promising. For the future, um, around these districts, um, what we're talking about is 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 new construction, right? These, these, these. And and I'm wondering, Maria, when you said about the FAR, for instance. Are we talking about, um, I wonder if we're having the same conversation about. What some folks in the community think is undesirable in terms of, in terms of massing or or hydro, you know, and and whether or not. Um, we can. Have a deeper conversation about whether or not for a building that's going up, particularly something that might be more, um. Um, he, he, future developments that might be more, uh, just larger in in size, whether or not. There's, there's ways for us to make decisions about, um, about, you know, sort of trading off. Uh, something like massing or or height or something like that for, um, for having a a very large, sustainable, um. Building that's built fossil fuel free, that's going to be around for a hundred years.
Sure.
And if that's, if that's, you know, is, are we basically, uh, are operating under artificial constraints that are, you know, based on previous. Previous debates that we've been having about about massing.
So first of all, I do want to say that we've got several land use studies going on in the planning department. We are looking for number one, the multifamily study is really to to release some of the barriers to. Creating multifamily and mixed use, the lower Boylston. So a lot of these studies could result in. You know, much more permissive zoning, increased density. So is that your question? So we, we're looking at study areas. Where we could go beyond like the building envelope or what the underlying zoning allows. So. I'm not at all suggesting that there isn't an opportunity to. You know, redevelop properties. We're talking about entire areas for redevelopment. And if we're going to do that. We sure, you know, better have green building standards and and that's a perfect opportunity to apply them. Does that answer your question about?
It does. And when you're saying the sta- I I'm trying to understand the difference between, so you said standards, but are we talking about guidelines or standard?
Oh, no, no. So when I, let's just talk, make it simple and just talk about the overlay district mechanism. So you have two. Two layers of zoning. There's the underlying zoning, which is kind of like the zoning that exists right now. And then the overlay district, district would have. More permissive zoning. It might allow for six stories instead of four stories, right? And so if we had, uh, an overlay district allowing for six stories, then we would have. I'm calling them standards, but it would be mandated. So you would have to do it. And if you don't want to do it. Then you've got, say, the crummy zoning, the underlying zoning. So that's how there's the carrot stick approach. Um, but, you know, whatever, what I call them standards, whatever is applies or travels with the overlay district zoning. It has to be done. It's considered a mandate.
Now, is that something that we can do right now, or is that something that we need state legislation to do?
Oh, we can do that right now. We, we actually have examples with the the well tower. I believe that there is an MOA. Um, the the wall of Dargon. So, you know, we're pretty motivated to advance fossil fuel free. And that's why we, we really love the overlay district mechanism because it allows you to really circumvent some of the concerns that the AG has. Um, and and it's just a, it's a great thing to do. We don't have to create new legislation.
Thank you.
Anyone, anyone? Any other questions from the select board? Okay.
That Allison Steinfield has her hand. Oh, there you go.
Okay.
And I, I believe that we have people in the audience that want to.
Um, Ms. Steinfield, why don't you go first and then we'll open up to the audience, although this is not posted as a hearing. Can't take questions. Ms. Steinfield.
I only wanted to say what Maria just said, and that is, we have relied extensively on the overlay district mechanism. And well, tower is a classic example. But, um, we've done about five or six in the last ten years. And because the existing zoning is still there, we have the opportunity to negotiate what we want. To achieve in exchange for benefits to the developer. And well, tower is the classic example. We got fossil fuel free development in effect in exchange for some of the demands of. The applicant, the property owner made to us. So it's been very effective.
Good. Okay, um. Ms. Fields, uh, why don't you usher our people who want to speak, uh, into the, um, meeting? My screen does not, uh, indicate who wants to speak, so. I have some problem here.
For the first person who requested comment was Jesse Gray.
Okay.
Hello, um, thanks to staff and also the board. Thanks, Maria and Allison and Victor. Um, and the board for, um, you know, what historically I think are, um. You know, really impressive levels of support, um, for, um, you know, climate activism, climate action. Um, of course, as, uh, you know, our former sustainability program administrator Zoe Lynn has said, this is a wicked problem. And it does require us to move faster. So my question is, you know, we pulled the Warren article for the, for the. Special Town Meeting last, uh, winter because, you know, we wanted to work with. The administration of this town, with staff of this town, with the select board of this town. And the, the charge was really to develop policies that could be put forward for the spring town meeting. And, um, that timeline was really important. So while it's really impressive, you know, the amount of thought that's been put into this and. You know, the overlay proposal is a great one. What would you say to, um, you know, the question of, uh, what do we do since this? Since we can't put this on the state, we can't put this in feds, we got to fix our problem here in Brookline. So what can we do now?
So one of the, like I said, one of the first things to do is really to establish those green building standards. So that's something we can, we can amend our zoning bylaw to make sure that design review for major impact projects. Actually includes those standards. But we've long felt that the community and environmental impact standards under five oh nine. Are very generic. They really don't allow us to shape projects. Um, they don't really communicate to developers how, what we value about different, say, you know, urban design areas. That's, that's pretty easy. And that provides a a basis for negotiating with. Uh, with an applicant on a major impact project, um, which we might see. We don't, we don't see. A lot of major impact projects. I mean, we're seeing more forty Bs than than forty-eight projects, to be, to be frank with you.
And in terms of the overlay districts, we don't need by law or town meeting approval. Again, that's negotiated and there are two. Overlay projects in process right now. One, of course, is lower Boylston and the other is Hebrew Senior Life on Center Street. And, uh, I can assure you that full, uh, fossil fuel free will be incorporated into the requirements. And also already, already been raised with the develop, with HSL, Hebrew Senior Life. So that's.
Yes, and they, and they have, they've said that they were, they're looking at it, you know, every which way Sunday, so. Um, you know, and how to make it, how I make the the buildings that they're going to propose fossil fuel free, so. We're going to keep on about it.
Next person. The next person who is, uh, asked for public comment is Kathleen Scanlon.
Oh, I just have a question, um. If, if we are relying on overlay districts. Um, for major or major impact with design review, it just seems like a very slow way. To trigger this mechanism and so selective, it doesn't really get to the awareness. Of the general public. Um, and I just wonder how that could be remedied. Is there a way that? Um, I mean, I, you know, with overlay districts, I don't know if there's ways to create other ones. That could be more encompassing of where multifamily goes in or, um. I'd, I'd love to hear your thoughts on that.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're frustrated too. Uh, I mean. Uh, I think with what we're seeing in, say, Newton or City of Boston. You know, you really have to get your hands dirty. It's just, there's a lot of like peer to peer influencing. Um, that's just, that's just, there's no, no way around it. We cannot just do this through mandates. Mandates alone are not going to be effective. Um, and so I think that, that's just, that's why we put education up there. At the forefront. I think case studies are great for, for risk averse developers. And maybe some homeowners who might not have been taking advantage of heat pump incentives.
Right, but, um, but hold, hold on, but, um. If you're saying mandates don't work and zoning incentives aren't possible, how are you going to accomplish that?
We, this is where our zoning is right now. We actually, um. Feel that a lot, there are some districts that are susceptible to Dietrich, to a section six ruling. That's just the lay of the land in Brookline. There are a lot of, 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 um, probably outmoded. There's a lot of outmoded zoning and we unfortunately can't fix that overnight. Um, so if our zoning did work, say, in multifamily. Then incentives would make a lot of sense. So we can't fix everything that's wrong. It's just, there's a perfect storm. It's this convergence of, we have some outmoded zoning and then we, we have, um. An urgent need to advance fossil fuel free. So we're just giving you a picture of what our zoning looks like and what's, what's most feasible.
Uh, two things. One is in terms of education, that will be a high priority of the Assistant Director for. of the assistant director for regulator, for sustainability planning. And in terms of development, quite honestly, we don't see that much development in Brookline. In part because we're essentially developed community, but also because we do have very tough zoning. So in order to, we have to create the, allow for, to create housing in, in order to incorporate fossil fuel free into that. Development is very slow in Brookline.
Ms. Heller. You're muted.
Before the planning board. Are there ways or guidelines or regulations we could put in on the planning board to say, we want fossil fuel free, you know? We want you to come forward with some, with plans for complete electrification and, you know, we want you to ranges and, and all electric appliances and we want you to have, we don't want you to use any gas, any oil or any coal.
Absolutely.
Is there a way? I, I've seen that happen at the planning board in a suggestive way. And the developer was all on top of it. But I'm not sure it happens on a really consistent basis. And I'm wondering if we could somehow make it happen on a consistent basis.
So what, what I would really recommend is by the time you get your plans, which you might have spent like months on, and then you're getting to the planning board, it's a little late to be talking about that. And that's.
We should go to the building department first?
No, I, I really, I really am serious. Even though you cannot enforce standards that are guidelines, you can't enforce them, you have to communicate them. The people know, what does Brookline want? There are a lot of developers that want to give Brookline something that it wants because they do want a favorable experience before our boards. But if you're not communicating that, they're spending all this time working on their schematic drawings when they should be thinking about some of these green building standards. There, what's wrong with actually communicating them, having them memorialized in zoning? One thing I would do at the planning board or at the ZBA is if the developer did agree, I probably would, would, would memorialize that in, in an MOA and not necessarily the decision, but I would memorialize them. So there is, there is a possibility that you can have a basis, a floor for a negotiation just by communicating. But I, I do want to make it clear, it's not as powerful as a mandate.
Do you think that building, we've talked before about giving incentives in the term, in terms of lowering our permitting fees? And maybe in order not to lose the revenue, we increase the ones on the people who are going to do gas and decrease the ones on the people who are going to do fossil fuel free. I mean.
Well, I think Director Steinfield.
Is this discrimination or?
I mean, I think it's illegal, but.
At the two and a half, it probably is illegal. It would require an opinion from town council.
Right. So, you know, we've explored, you know, where, what would a funding source be for incentives? It, it's really hard to pick on the building department because right now, I mean, if we're talking about passive house and embodied carbon and lifecycle assessments, you know, we really need to scope out what that means. What, what skill set does the building department need in order to, to really hit the ground running and support this? So, you know, it's kind of like putting your socks on over your shoes. Let's scope out what's needed, what's expected of staff and figure out, you know, if that department maybe needs more funding, you know? So I, I don't want to throw, throw out that idea. I just want to say, kind of like first things first, we all want to be part of this. Not just, it's, you know, the staff as well, it needs to rise to the occasion, so.
The next person signed up for comment is Lisa Cunningham.
Hi, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Great. Thanks so much for your time tonight. I appreciate it. I haven't organized my remarks very well, but I, I did want to say that I don't think that education is really the way to promote this. I think that this has been proven in many campaigns. You can just pick cigarette smoking as an example. You can educate all you want, but really what you have to do is you have to establish legislation to, to enable people or to incentivize people to, to do things. And so I'm not sure if everybody saw the Washington Post article that came out today where Brookline was mentioned in terms of the legislation that we passed, we've become a national leader in terms of building around the concept of building electrification throughout the state and, and throughout the country. And I'm, I'm actually wondering, there's a lot of towns that actually have done zoning incentives. Somerville, Amherst, Wellesley, and Boston. And I'm wondering what ideas you have in terms of exploring particular zoning incentives? I can think of, for example, setbacks or height. You've mentioned FAR. And I'm sure there are a few more ideas that you've come up with. I think also, I just wanted to make one more point too, in terms of the studies that you brought up, that when we passed Warren Article 21, we proved that building electrification was cost effective and practical for building retrofits in terms of gut renovations as well as new construction. There's lots of data to support that. So I don't want there to be any misunderstanding that, that building retrofits are not cost effective under current stretch code conditions. They are completely cost effective. And as an illustration of that, while we were doing Warren Article 21, our own housing authority had two buildings under construction, under retrofit, utilizing VRF, variable refrigerated flow, heat pump construction.
Yep. So I agree. I, I stated clearly that stretch code is sufficient and that the retrofits existing, especially for single family, we just want to see incentives that help support some of the standards that are in line with stretch code. So we, we want to make that really clear that we just want to make it easier for single family homes to get those incentives. That, that's all. About Somerville, Somerville actually uses an overlay district mechanism and ties, ties that to no onsite combustion, renewable energy or green roof. And, you know, and passive house or living future target. So actually, Somerville does have in their zoning, I think it was in 2019. And I think when you talk about mandates, and I certainly respect all the work that was, you know, that really surrounded Warren Article 21. I mean, it's, it's an inspiration and we just, we want to, we really want to keep Brookline at, at the forefront, but you also have to look at how have we moved the needle? So if we don't need education, how are people, do we have a track, are we tracking heat pump installation? Are, are we, are we tracking solar on our, you know, on our properties? I'd like to see those numbers. I'd like to see how all of this talk has really translated into moving the needle because.
Oh, well, I can answer that question really easily. I mean, we just, we've just had a letter that's been signed by almost 60 communities in the Commonwealth to support an opt-in net zero stretch code that was sent to Charlie Baker, representing almost 40% of the population. Every single select board member signed it, a number of town meeting members signed it and almost 60 communities have signed that. Also, we, in our building electrification accelerator program that we've conducted with RMI, we have 17 towns and cities, well, actually 15 towns and cities plus Arlington and Brookline participate. Out of those towns and cities, two, Brookline and Arlington have already passed home rule petition and seven more towns and cities are going forward with.
That's not what I was talking about. That's not what I was talking. I was talking about in Brookline, have we, we just, I'm just talking about, are we tracking properties that have installed heat pumps and put solar? I, that's all I'm saying. I'm talking about really local here. I wasn't talking about home rule or anything like that.
Anecdotally, we've just.
Let's start.
I'm not going to be back and forth, but I'm going to say anecdotally, we have one project that just finished construction with heat pump and three that are under construction.
That's great. That's great. All, all I'm saying is I really would love to see us, whether it's the planning department, I wasn't, you know, voicing this on anybody, but I think it would be really good to know how we're moving the needle. You know, how, how effective any of this discussion has been and how we're actually seeing conversions take place. Are, are we talking, we could talk to commercial property owners who have, like, say, a lot of, a lot of properties in Brookline. They're not going to be waiting till burnout to do these conversions. Let's talk to them ahead of time about planning that, that retrofit and planning those upgrades to, to. I mean, Brookline is not a huge town. They're probably just a handful of property owners that know, own how much of the property. I really think that, that, that could kind of work here. I just, I'm just, I'm not saying education instead of mandates, believe me. I, I just want to make that clear. Okay?
Good. Okay. Anyone else in the queue to speak, Devin?
No.
Okay. Before we move on, I'd like to just get a sense of what the next steps are. Particularly for the select board. And you've updated us now, what?
Oh, you're, you're speaking to me. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Well, I think one of the things that you have, I think it's a great step in the right direction is to have on your, your next week's agenda to really show support from you at the state level for a net zero stretch code or at least some provisions in there for onsite, no onsite combustion. Really just, Brookline has a lot of currency. This is a great time to be using that. I think that with the new assistant director, working with this person on green building guidelines so that we can apply them, working with the petitioners on what that might be. I think that is, that's great to just, that will have a lot of mileage.
Hey, can, can we get an update on the sustainability person that, that we're looking for? Are we still looking?
We're still looking and we're still interviewing, yes.
Okay, good. Okay, unless there's anything else on the board? Thank you. Okay, our next item is warrant articles that we may want to put forth. Is anyone going to lead that discussion? Is, I see Ms. Goff is here.
Sure, I can, I can kick us off. So we normally have this item on the agenda in order for board members who are working on various committees to give a heads up before the warrant closes on warrant articles that will be filed sponsored by the select board. So at the budget presentation last week, I mentioned that we will be filing one for creating the sustainability division in the planning department. The home rule petition that Mel mentioned last week for the racial equity fund. Heather reached out to me last week on the Community Preservation Act, so we're drafting one. If that is successful at the ballot, we will be looking to create a bylaw. And then I believe that you earlier tonight took a vote on the restrictive covenants, which will be filed as a town meeting warrant article for the residents of South Brookline and then just opening it up to anyone who might have some other warrant articles floating out there for the board to just be aware of.
Yeah, I, I'd like to raise something that I don't think should be a warrant article, but it is still related to warrant articles. And that is, I think last year, this board voted a thing called Select Board Warrant Article Guidelines. We sort of laid out what we expect warrant article petitioners to come to us with. Sort of common sense things that you'd think that, you know, everyone would follow. Now, that, that's on the webpage of the select board. It is not on the page called submit an article. So I think that we should try to figure out how we can get that on that page. Because people should know, you know, with, that when they come to the select board, they'll be, they will be asked certain specific questions, no matter what the warrant article is. And they should be prepared for that. So I, I'd like to, I don't know how that's done. Is that something that Devin would do or?
So we can, I believe the content you're referring to is town clerk related. So we can absolutely reach out to the town clerk's office and make sure that that is something that they can include in, in their content.
Okay. I mean, I assume that people, when people write warrant articles, they go to, to that page in order to figure out how to do it. And, and you know, so this ought to be on that page. So any? Just along those lines very quickly, I was on that page earlier today. I'm, I'm working with the Indigenous People Celebration Committee on a warrant article that would, that would amend the town general bylaws to have a land acknowledgement. You know, following the singing of the national anthem, but before things kickoff in town meeting, acknowledging the Indigenous history of the land, not going to ask the select board to, 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 to sponsor that because ultimately it's going to be town meetings decision, whether or not they want to sort of incorporate this into town meetings sort of procedures. But I will say that when looking at the site, one of the things that's, that I think is absent is any kind of template for different types of warrant articles, a resolution versus a change to the bylaws, whatever it is. I didn't really see any templates there. So I, you know, you can look back at former warrants and kind of get a sense of what might work, but I do know that people sometimes get tripped up between a resolution for, format versus a proper warrant article format. And that's something that we see time and time again. So if, if things are getting updated on that website, maybe some more explanation about the difference between those two. And maybe some, some, some samples might be helpful.
I think that's a, a big reason why we encourage people to work with the town council's office in order to make sure that their articles are in proper form. Obviously, it's a week before the warrant closes, so not an ideal amount of time for them to do a review. But, you know, the earlier that you can, you know, start working on an article and engaging with that office, the better. And I'm also available for, you know, assistance as well, but we'll see if there are other communities that might maybe have some guides that we can look at.
Yeah, I wonder if, if we know who, who's queuing up to submit articles, whether we should send the select board's guidelines to them, just, you know, ju- just so that when they come to us, you know, they, they, they're prepared. Okay, I don't know. So it sounds like no one knows whether that makes any sense. Okay. Any other discussion?
I've heard about a few different warrant articles, but they're all people who've done 10 warrant articles before, so I think that they're probably pretty prepared, you know?
John has his hand up.
Okay, Mr. Vance, go ahead. I don't have it on my screen. I don't know what's wrong here. I should talk to Devin about that.
So this would, would really hinge on the, I believe, the town council's office being able to put the article together. But I do know that we discussed in connection with the ballot question that will, I hope, result in voter approval of our town clerk becoming an appointed position instead of an elected position. There had been discussion of a couple of issues that would need to be addressed subsequently because there would be a sort of a, a misalignment between the town clerk being appointed and statutes or bylaws previously passed that identified the town clerk as a voting member of town meeting. And of course, you could end up with an appointed town clerk who isn't even a resident of the town. And it is true that this will not be any kind of a crisis because, you know, as Mel pointed out to us all, there, there won't be much problem with, you know, if, if and when we appoint a town clerk for the first time, there won't be that much problem in making sure that that town clerk doesn't vote at town meeting. On the other hand, you, you do have to have everything sort of in alignment in terms of what, what one statute or bylaw says versus, you know, what in fact is the intended powers of this town clerk, which are not to include voting at town meeting. So i- is it possible that our town clerk's office could sort of boil, boil it down to the corrections that need to be made and present some sort of corrective warrant article at the, at the Maytown meeting?
I, I think it's premature, John. I, I think we would prefer to see how the ballot question fares before we do that. These are not significant issues. They happen. We noticed, for example, that the town treasurer, which was made appointed, still has some old language. So we'd want to clean that up too. I think we, we would see it as an omnibus type of a housekeeping package that we probably do in the fall.
That's right.
Ms. Allison.
I'll just, more for my own sanity, remind all of us that John and I signed up to try to figure out how we review Warren articles in a more efficient manner. So John, we should probably meet again.
I will mention that we did discuss this at the advisory committee last week. And one of the things that we're looking to do is have a joint meeting with the select board and the A and F Subcommittee of the Advisory Committee to, to look at just doing a joint hearing for the easy articles. So the ones that we do every year, compensating balances, unpaid bills, if there are none. And so that way we can at least get that out of the way. So that's something that we should, you know, as you, as you have your conversations, I would love to be, you know, included in that to kind of help you anticipate some of the other things that they're talking about.
Excellent. John and I would absolutely need your assistance.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll just add that, um, yeah, I think this is great for this go around. And then for the future, I, I, I would love to see a similar process where there's also all these boards and commissions that end up hearing these Warren articles too and, and facilitating partnerships between boards and commissions to hear some of them at the same time. I could see also being helpful, but maybe for the next, the next run through.
Yeah, I think, you know, boards and commissions, there's definitely this perception that they are trying to target the combined reports. But I think, you know, as they're working for you, they should be trying to help you with information before you make your, your call as well. So I think that's something we can talk about with, you know, department heads as, as we kind of gear up for this, this town meeting season.
Okay.
Great. Okay. Seeing nothing else, why don't we end this meeting? Thank you, everyone.
Good night, everybody.